If we can take roll call, Ramona?
Yes, Madam Chair, roll call for the Resources and Development Committee of the Naval Nation Council, September 22nd, 2025, regular meeting. Honorable Brenda Jesus.
Present.
Thank you, Honorable Brenda Jesus is present. Honorable Vice Chair Casey Allen Johnson.
Vice Chair Casey Allen Johnson is present.
Thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Casey Allen Johnson is present. Honorable Shawna Anclaw.
Present.
Thank you, Honorable Shawna Anclaw is present. Honorable Ricky Ness.
Honorable Ricky Ness is present.
Thank you, Honorable Ricky Ness is present. Honorable Danny Simpson. Thank you, Honorable Danny Simpson is present. Honorable Otto So.
Excuse.
Thank you, Honorable Otto So is excused. Madam Chair, we have five members present upon roll call. One member excused, Madam Chair.
Good morning, Ramona, for roll call and taking next to invocation. Do I have any of my colleagues to provide invocation here this morning?
Good morning to everybody, everybody that's on the call and those that are here with us in the conference room. Good morning to my colleagues here at the Resources and Development Committee, also our Research and Development Committee staff advisor. Thank you for being here and also our Legislative Council, thank you for being here with us today. I'm glad you remembered this time. So I'd like to go ahead and say a prayer to start off the meeting. Dear Father, we come to you this beautiful morning to thank you for all the beautiful blessings yes you have bestowed on each and every one of us. That you continue to watch over our families, our relatives and our Naval Nation. That you continue to protect us as we travel to and from our meetings and home and wherever else we may to be. And that you continue to protect our travel and keep us safe and return home to our families safely. I'd like to thank you for all the moisture, that you pour the rain. It's beautiful to have this rain on our land and vegetation, wildlife, animals, livestock. And it's really a blessing. Just like to thank you and give gratitude for all the beautiful blessings. So we have a good meeting today and say all these things and then Jesus Christ tonight.
Yeah, thank you Vice Chair for that prayer here this morning. Going on to item number two, recognize guests and visiting officials. Of course, we have the 25th. 25th, Resources and Development Committee members and also our Legislative Services staff and also our Legal Counselor Ms. Khan. Although in the AIA, we have honorable Madam Vice President, Ms. Matoyan Kianataniyate. Thank you for being here at our Resources and Development Committee meeting. There was some of the discussions that is going on with this committee. Thank you for your presence, ma'am. And then also I'd like to thank Office of the Speaker staff, Mr. Hardy and also Mr. Menus for your presence here and then Cortasha with Intype. As always, we appreciate your presence here and then to Intiway, Mr. Ashley Shiyage. And also to Mr. Charlie, yeah. And then to our listeners on the call, good morning. I'm sure that BIA is on the call. Thank you for your presence and to our relatives that are also listening in. So with that, shame not to not review and adopt the agenda. So if we can read the proposed agenda to the record.
Good morning, members of the Resources and Development Committee. This is your proposed agenda for September 22nd, 2025, it's a regular meeting. Presiding is Brenda Jesus, Chairwoman, Casey Allen Johnson, Vice Chairman. Place in dot Senator John Pinto, Boardroom, Save the Native of Navajo Nation, New Mexico. One call the meeting toward the roll call, the invocation to recognize guests and visiting officials. Three, review the draft of the agenda. Four, reviewing about the journal. Nine, I've received reports, a presentation and feedback, ASC FY 2026 plans and improvement initiatives. Presenter is Jaren Charlie, Director, Administrative Services Centers, Division of Community Development. First bullet is FY 2025 chapter budget issues. Second bullet is conflicts at local chapters. Third is reassigning ASC chapter areas of responsibilities to others. And then fourth bullet is plans of operation. And then the fifth bullet is RDC feedback on resolving accountability issues. The update on Agriculture Resource Management Plan, ARMP. Presenter is Ted Johna Woody, Wildlife Biologist, Department of Fish and Wildlife. DNR, CEUS EPA Grant Underground Injection Control Program, 1.9 million dollars update. Presenter is Yolanda Barney, Director, Surface and Groundwater Protection Department, Navajo EPA with Stephen Etzubi, Executive Director, Navajo EPA. Six old business, none, seven new business, A, Legislation Number 0204-25. And then B, Legislation Number 0205-25. C, Legislation Number 206-25. Legislation Number 214-25 is letter D. E, scheduling the public hearings on grazing permits entitled 26 amendments. F is scheduling a meeting on the Four Corners Power Plant Proposal. And that's scheduled for October 7th, 2025. Eight, both of these sessions will be announced with adjournment. The next meeting is September 29th, 2025.
Wishy, thank you for that. Ms. Nokai, so colleagues, I'd like to get a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Honorable Claw, seconded by Vice Chair Johnson. So colleagues, do we have any questions or amendments to the proposed agenda here before us this morning? Madam Chair.
So first of all, offer an amendment to the agenda to remove from received reports, item B. And I'd also like to add the US EPA Grant Underground Injection Control Program, 1.9 million update. Presenter is going to be Yolanda Barney, Director, Surface and Groundwater Protection Department, Navo PA. With Stephen Etzubi, also Executive Corrector and that would be a. And also like to go ahead and remove Legislation Number 0206-25 and Legislation 0214-25. And also delete item E and item F from the agenda. And I'd like to go ahead and add a consent for Legislation Number 0204-25. And Legislation Number 0205-25, which is item A and B on new business. And also like have that new business before receiving reports. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, thank you Vice Chair Johnson for that amendment. So colleagues, we have Amendment Number, Number One, motion by Vice Chair Johnson. And it is to delete item under received reports, item letter B, update on the Agriculture Resource Management Plan, ARMP. Wildlife biologist, Ms. Woody, Department of Fish and Wildlife. And then to add, which would be the new letter B, US EPA Grant Underground Injection Control Program. Of the 1.9 million dollar grant update. Although AIA going to new business legislation, number 20625. 21425 will be deleted off of the agenda along with item letter E. Schedule public hearings on grazing permits entitled 26 amendments. And letter F, scheduling a meeting on the Four Corners Power Plant Proposal. So taking new business to number five and receive reports will be the new number seven. And is that accurate?
Question. And then the three and two.
Okay, I, Legislation 20425 and Legislation 20525 will be on consent agenda. Yeah, new business will go into number five and receive reports will go into number seven. So that is the amendments, Amendment Number One, colleagues. So may I get a second? Honorable Chair Simpson. So colleagues, do we have any question on Amendment Number One? Going once, going twice. So with that, I'd like to go ahead and take Amendment Number One to roll call vote. Honorable Vice Chair Johnson, how do you vote?
Vice Chair Casey Allen Johnson votes green.
Thank you, Honorable Shawna Anclaw, how do you vote?
I vote green.
Thank you, Honorable Chair Ness, how do you vote?
Honorable Ricky Ness votes green.
Thank you, Honorable Chair Simpson, how do you vote? Okay, Honorable Otto So is excused. So with that, colleagues, we have four in favor, zero opposed and chair not voting. So motion carries on Amendment Number One. Going back up to main motion in regards to the agenda, colleagues. Do we have any additional comments or amendments at this time? Going once, going twice. Take this to roll call vote and approving, or main motion on approving the agenda. Honorable Vice Chair Johnson, how do you vote?
Vice Chair Casey Allen Johnson, it's green.
Thank you, Honorable Shawna Anclaw, how do you vote?
I vote green.
Thank you, Honorable Chair Ness, how do you vote?
Honorable Ricky Ness votes green.
Thank you, Honorable Chair Simpson. Thank you, and Honorable Otto So is excused, four in favor, zero opposed and chair not voting. So motion carries and we do have approved agenda here before us to this morning. So going further on to item number four, review and adopt the journal. We don't have any for today's Resources and Development Committee meeting, colleagues. Going on to item number five, new business. We do have consent agenda items on Legislation 20425, 20525. So Ms. Nokai, you can please read the legislations into the record.
Okay, yeah. Legislation Number 0204-25, it's Resources and Development Committee. It's filed according to post standing committee resolution 25th Navajo Nation Council, third year 2025. Introduced by Carl Slater and co-sponsored by Rick Metz. Tracking Number 0204-25 in action relating to Resources and Development Committee approving a tribal authorization access to the Navajo Department of Transportation for the purposes of construction, maintenance, easements for N12, 13-2, 1, 2, and 4 located within the Sayid Wheat Fields chapter vicinity. And approving a waiver of consideration and perpetual term for the Navajo, for the tribal authorization access. The second legislation is also the Resources and Development Committee has filed, was filed for post standing for the resolution 25th Navajo Nation, seventh third year, 2045. Introduced by Carl R. Slater and then co-sponsored by Chair Ness. Tracking Number 0205-25 in action relating to Resources and Development Committee approving a temporary construction easement to the Navajo Department of Transportation when purpose of constructing roadway improvements to N12. In parentheses, 13-2, 1, 2, and 4 located within the Sayid Wheat Fields chapter vicinity and approving a waiver of consideration.
Thank you for that, Ms. Nokai. So with that, colleagues, may I get a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Honorable Claw, may I get a second?
Second.
Second by Honorable Chair Simpson. So on consent items, colleagues, there's usually no discussion. So I'd like to go ahead and take this consent item of Legislation 20425, 20525, to a roll call vote. Honorable Vice Chair Johnson, how do you vote?
Vice Chair Casey Allen Johnson votes green.
Thank you, Honorable Shawna Anclaw, how do you vote?
I vote green.
Thank you, Honorable Chair Ness, how do you vote?
Honorable Ricky Ness votes green.
Thank you, Honorable Chair Simpson. Thank you, and Honorable Otto So is excused. So with that, colleagues, we have four in favor, zero opposed and chair not voting. And with that, we go on to item number six, old business. We have none, item number seven, receive reports. We do have item letter A, presentation and feedback with the Administrative Service Center. FY 2026 plans and improvement initiatives. We do have Director, Mr. Jerome Charlie, with the Administrative Service Center with Division of Community Development here. Colleagues, I believe he did send a presentation via electronic, it should be sent out to everyone. So Mr. Charlie, if you can go ahead and take the seat here and we usually allot 20 minutes for visitation. And whenever you're ready, just let us know and we'll go ahead and start. They talk really, really fast. So we'll let, we'll have you start at 10:43.
Okay, I, I'm Jerome Charlie, here with the Administrative Services Center. I come today to present a report as well as FY 26 plans and improvement for Um, I come today to present a report as well as FY twenty six, um, plans and improvement for Department of Administrative Services Center. Um, just to build on FY twenty five of some of the shortcomings that did happen both at the local level as well as at the department level. Uh, so this purpose is just to kind of outline some of the items that we're looking at improving as well as for a chance for me to receive some feedback, as I believe that, you know, proper collaboration is essential for building any department or any division. And short foot, I say, good morning to Madam VP right there. Good morning, thank you for attending. Uh, so I will go ahead and get started. Uh, so first for Administrative Services Center on my, um, presentation here. Uh, the first thing I want to note is, um, the definition that I found for technical assistance. So everyone kind of has an idea. It says refers to the transfer of knowledge, skills, expertise, technology, or services from an external party such as a government agency, non-governmental organization, or a consultant to individuals, organizations, or institutions in order to build capacity, solve problems, and improve performance and out or outcomes. It often includes training, consultation, coaching, and the provision of tools or resources to strengthen the recipient's ability to effectively carry out tasks and achieve objectives, uh, source United Nations Development Program. Uh, reason I put that on there is so everyone has, I don't know what the clear definition is when it was first developed for Administrative Services Center. But that is kind of where I draw it is from this definition of what technical assistance is. So focusing on this training, consultation, coaching, and the provision of providing tools and resources to strengthen the capacity of one. Uh, so in that instance, that's kind of what technical assistance as I define it is. Uh, so going on to next, um, so I receive, or actually, I received many, um, issues with the FY twenty five budget that then include a, um, continued resolution as well as a second allocation for the chapters of the chapter levels, specifically to chapter budgets. Uh, in that we didn't, we did have many obstacles and we did have many challenges with, um, the development of those budgets as well as getting chapters paid out. Uh, in the two years I have been here, it on average takes about one quarter to fully pay out all one hundred and ten chapters for, um, their annual budget. So in this year, what happened, we took that and we times it by two. So that's about how long it takes. So literally spent about half a year trying to get one hundred and ten chapters all paid. Uh, that was one of the first challenges. Right, the second challenge is, um, working ASC does work with Office of Management and Budget as well as Office of the Controller in order to ensure accuracy of the budgets and the chapter, to the chapters. Uh, they must be concurred by those other two departments if there are any losses since us are getting the funds paid out. So in doing so, um, the previous, the way it was before, before I came in was, uh, chapter sheet is created by created by ASC. So the chapter budget is created by ASC and then is sent to O M B as well as O O C for review. Uh, there is the time of creating the budget due to the continued resolution and some of the language in the following, um, annual allocation for the second portion. Uh, there was some mistakes, there was some issues that happened. Some of the budgets were getting sent between ourselves or these two departments. Uh, there was some variances and then there was some changes that did happen. And I would estimate maybe about seven different budget sheets circulated within that timeframe resulting in obviously, um, US delegates also heard the complaint of multiple changes to the chapter budget. Uh, so going forward from here, um, which I do have planned for later this week, uh, ASC has created the chapter budget for FY twenty six. And we are having a sit down meeting this week with O M B and O O C to review these documents before we send them out to the chapter. Before we send that down to the chapter level for chapters to start getting their allocation budgets and resolutions together. Um, I'm hoping that this step will prevent the, um, will prevent another situation like what happened this past FY where we had multiple going back and forth and then they had to review their chapters for resolutions again and again. Uh, so I'm gonna just bring everybody who works on these chapters together and we do, like I said, we do have that meeting this week. So, uh, just there are any chapters listening right now, I'm hoping to get this all done by Friday, so hopefully we'll have it going out by then. And that will be concurred by both O O P and O M B as well as my staff. So that's.
Just talk about.
Okay. So that is to prevent any chapter but issues for FY twenty six. Uh, second up is the conflicts at local chapters. Uh, so there are multiple chapters. Um, I will say there are maybe about twenty chapters where there's issues of conflict, whether it be betw- between internally between the three officials or between the officials and their chapter staff. Or sometimes it's internally between the chapter staff or combination of those with community members as well as with delegates as well as with ASC. So it is a, um, I would say about five different entities that are involved with chapter conflicts. Um, probably try and mitigate these is very difficult just due to a lot of it is personnel issues and at times when I'm speaking with others, I cannot address some of these through the personnel issues. Uh, but what I am is right now in the process of developing and I'm going to be utilizing my team as well as our DOJ to try and develop a try and develop a step by step process for official staff and community members. So it is to, the step by step process is to try and help mitigate some of these conflicts. But, um, I do want to remind everybody that, you know, we are all human. We all have our personal personalities and as we know, they don't always mesh well with each other. So I do want to reemphasize that to everybody that, you know, we may have these policies, we do have policies in place and developing another process to hopefully mitigate some of these issues at the chapter level. But do remember everyone is their own person. Some people take it properly, some don't, some wish to deflect, some wish to accept it. Um, but it is a combination of those. But I will be working with, um, ethics and rules as well as DOJ to try and develop the step by step process. And a lot of it has come due to the fact that Navo Nation is based on written documentation. Written documents, I, you know, I do get a lot of, um, complaints, but a lot of it do come back as, um, verbal and verbal, obviously I cannot do anything with that. As with all personnel matters, it does say in there that they must be written documented forms. Um, currently it is set up to where there has to be either a repeated pattern, order has to be an established pattern for some of these disciplinary actions. It has to be a continuous basis. It cannot be just a one time hit and address it right away. So it is a slow process. It is a very tedious process. Um, but you know, if you've done disciplinary actions on Navo Nation, it does take a while. And to properly do it, which is what I stand for, is doing it properly to not impede on any employee's rights or anybody's rights as a person, um, it is a slow and tedious process. But I am hoping that this step by step process will give officials and staff at least, um, a tool, another tool in their toolbox that they can utilize. Um, and one concern I do get, again, from both community members, I get it from chapter staff and also get it even from the officials themselves. What is, is there an avenue? This is around requesting assistance from R D Cs or some input. Where is there an avenue to discipline officials? As opposed to utilizing just ethics and rules. Ethics and rules is they are very backed up and it is, as I mentioned, a slow process. There are instances where officials, they either will not work together or they will not, they will be against one another. And it's very difficult to mitigate those and trying to assist the community when either one or two people don't want to participate or they don't want to adhere to the advisement or the training that are provided. So it does make it very difficult on our end. Uh, when we go through elections, when we go through ethics and rules, how would this, how would we be able to, if any, discipline employees or who has oversight over the officials, chapter officials? Uh, so that's for complete, and then obviously for community members, um, I can't really do much about community members except talk to them nicely and ask them for proper conduct at meetings. And that is also to prevent them from, I've seen restraining orders put in, I've seen potential fights breaking out. So it's, some of these stuff are escalating and I'm not saying it's all one hundred and ten chapters. I would say more of, oh, probably about twenty. And then the rest of the chapters are just one time. So it is not, it's not a knock on all one hundred and ten. I'll say only about twenty or so. That's real, real issues. Uh, one next, uh, one of the things I'm able to do in my capacity is reassign chapters under ASC offices. Um, I did attach the current memo on to the packet I sent, but I did realign some of the chapters. Uh, not all of them, but I did move some around and this is to provide uh, more aid to mitigate some potential conflicts of interest that may be at some of those other chapters. As well as just to better align my ASC offices. So hopefully if they're a little more evenly spaced out, they'll be able to provide the assistance needed for some of those chapters. So that is, it is implemented for six months right now. I will revisit it at the end of, um, the second quarter with, um, considerations to talking to some of the chapters as well as my staff, the plan is working or that needs to be revisited again. So, uh, but I did attach it, so we'll have that. So next is our plan of operations. I did attach that as well, current plan of operations is the top one. I forgot to type out current, but I wrote it out on the top. And then the second copy you have are just some of the, um, it's more of an updated, quick update of, um, the plan of operations. There are more, there is more that's going to go into it, but this was just a quick rough what needs to be updated in terms of stacking levels, in terms of some duties and in terms of some of the processes and, um, varying some of the language. Uh, the red area is the one that, um, me as well as my staff with ASC is what we identified need to be some changes that were immediate. And that goes into my second question or my second request of R D C for some assistance, for some input. Is I do have some, and it has come up in multiple chapter meetings as well as council sessions and other committee meetings. Uh, my, some of my ASC staff being put in the, um, position, being in positions of chapter officials. I don't, I don't believe for that to probably be proper, especially when somebody's chapter can fall under their supervision. It's, you know, very similar to, I would say, delegate being a chapter official. It's just, I don't believe so, it's what's happened. Um, I have contacted R D O J to see if it's possible for me to make a memo and stated that not at this time, it is not lawfully for me to do it. So I wanted to come to R D C to ask if there's a way to do it. Can it just be implemented in our plan of operations? Does it have to go through a proper council legislation? I'm not a hundred percent sure. So I just need some input, some feedback on how to go through that process as well as any information you guys may need regarding that. Uh, so that's one of the big ones I have for a plan of operations, adjusting that. And also just, um, so everyone knows for FY twenty six, we are planning continually that, um, all of my ASC offices, all eight, they are required to conduct minimum one training for their staff as well as for the officials, chapter staff and officials are to be invited to a training. The training can be combined or they can have separate ones for officials and one for staff. Um, I do encourage chapters that they are listening right now. I do encourage that if you have training topics that you would like to see, if you do have needs at your chapter that need to be addressed, send those to ASC so we can get those planned out. I have had DOJ present at one meeting, I've had Department of Personnel Management, I've had a complete budget review as well as, um, annotations as well as advisement. So we're trying to gear these toward what the chapter needs. But if you don't tell us what you need, it's kind of hard to identify training. If not, we just do general topics that we believe that we see on our end in terms of budget reviews or just, uh, whatever kind of reviews we do. Where we see shortcomings, that there's specific needs they need, uh, you know, send that to us. I would very much appreciate it. That helps guide my staff in terms of making the training for their areas. So as of right now, that's all I have. Appreciate any feedback you can give to assist us in this as well as to give, you know, better collaboration efforts with us in our respect. Thank you.
Wishy, thank you for your report, Mr. Charlie. I do have a motion to accept the report by Honorable Chair Ness. And I have a second by Vice Chair Johnson. So with that, colleagues, do you, does anyone have any questions for what was presented here by the Administrative Services Center? I know that this has been, um, brought up to the Resources and Development Committee at, on the floor of Navo Nation Council in regards to some of the, um, uh, conflicts that is going on at chapter level and, um, and again, um, with what was provided here today. I don't know if any of my colleagues have any questions. Chair Ness.
Thank you, Madam Chair, committee members, Charlie. Uh, it must be difficult to be in a position where you have to try and be a peacemaker. But, you know, you're right about uh, a lot of the issues, conflict issues. It's, it's a human characteristic. It's part of being human. And always think that when things get difficult, although we're talking about problem solving issues step by step. I believe that as leaders, you have to understand the humility part of being a public servant rather than I'm the boss, I'm the chapter official here. And it can become very difficult when you start, um, using your rank to, to get things done. But whereas humility allows you to understand that you're, you're a public servant. You're there because the people trust that who you are and what you stand for and how you're gonna be an adult to solve these issues. But sometimes it doesn't happen that way. I've been a chapter official for ten years and I understand a lot of these problems, you know? Uh, with, with even the local community. Like when there's a faction over here, the relatives of a certain official and then a staff's relatives or another, um, faction for another official, it makes it difficult. And when, when things start to really blow up, I believe that chapter officials, especially the president, needs to be very neutral. Whether your family goes to the chapter meeting, you know, or others because you're really overseeing the community and and I, I hear a lot of things, you know, and people ask me to come after their chapters and help them resolve issues. And I would ask them if there's documents in place already or, you know, such as temporary restraint orders. Then it becomes difficult to really bring someone together because that restraint cannot allow people to be close with this on the feet of each other. How do you resolve issues? There's probably two areas that I think about the most is the what I call the code of conduct. There, it is up to the constituents to start a recall on a person or don't vote him back in. And it, it, people are not stupid. They observe the conducts of elected officials. But on the other hand, you have code of ethic. But on the other hand, you have code of ethics where you can file. Um charges against an individual and it'll come before Ethics and Rules Office. I mean, I, I have seen people to where they just. Favor certain people and they bully other people. Not only chapter officials, but raising officials as well. Fireboard members. And it, 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 it's just very difficult. So when you're talking about all these issues about how you would like to mitigate some of these and. DOJ doesn't even have answers for these. Because it's an, it's a human thing. Nobody likes to be told to do certain things. And it's a person that really is willing to learn and listen, how long they want to be elected leader. A leader, not elected official. That's where it separates, kind of like the sheep and the goats. You can identify a leader. You can also identify a person who just holds a position to receive stipends and whatever. You're there, you kind of know that they're just elected officials. Elected leader is of the community doing things, always doing things and. And making sure the community is developing. And I saw that, you know, and I see that with some officials. And how do you resolve that? Probably um what we had on the agenda today. That we took off was to schedule public hearings on grading terms on Title Twenty Six. Title Twenty Six is probably clear uh that people, even elected officials should assist as to how. You know, we can have a better local governance by. Listening to some of these elected officials. Have them provide some recommendations as to how they think as far as disciplinary actions. That has been an, an, an issue a long time ago. When I first got elected, how do you discipline them? There's no oversight for the chapter officials. And to, to me, I, I think that people just need to be careful who they vote in. The next time, I just want to make that statement. I don't really have any questions, but I do appreciate this uh report, Madam Chair, and I'm glad that we're. We're listening to this and I'm sure when we do schedule the public hearings on Title Twenty Six, a lot of people will come to the surface too, so. Back to you, Madam Chair, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Ness, for uh those um recommendations and comments that were made in regards to the port. To the report that was provided here. Um do I have any other colleagues with questions, um Honorable Claude?
Good morning to everyone. Good morning, Mr. Charlie. First of all, I wanted. Thank you for the report that you provided here today, and there are several questions that I have. So one of the questions I do have is in regards to what you defined as technical assistance. And in that sense, um it does state that. That refers to the transfer of knowledge, skills, expertise, technology or services from an external party. So based on that, oftentimes I have sent out emails asking questions. Those have always gone unanswered. So how are you guaranteeing that you do have the knowledge, that your team has the skills, the expertise or the technology? I think that's very important because most times our chapters are misled by ASC. And they, they tend to be given the runaround. And I can speak uh personally to that as a delegate. As I have sought out on numerous times um some assistants from ASC. So I do think that. Within your plan of operations, that does need to be clearly defined and I do hope that the Department of Justice is listening. Because they too oftentimes do fail delegates and chapters when those questions are posed to them as well. Part of the technical assistance should also encumber emergency management planning. I do sit on the Commission for the Emergency Management and we recently had a meeting. That regarded the windstorm tornado touchdown. One of the questions that we asked was, did this chapter have an emergency response plan? And unfortunately, the chapter did have a template. But they were unaware of how to um really use that plan. And so part of the question is, are we just being a paper mill to where we're just creating templates? But we're not putting these plans into action until the event actually happens. Uh I believe the same thing happened with the recent flooding. Those were the questions that we did ask Director Sandoval and when she replied. It was um responded that they did not have a plan in place. So I just want to know what type of technical assistance um can we define better in our plan of operation? So that would just be one of the questions that I have. And then second question is that. Many of your staff, I, I do support. The comment that you made um that ASC. Employees should not be chapter officials, nor should they be sitting on any commissions. That pertain to the Navo Nation government. And I think that I have thought about that and am continuing to explore the legislation that needs to be created. So that this um standard of. Um in my opinion, it's, you know, it's really unethical when you're the one that should be providing assistance to the chapter. But then you're receiving a stipend as a commissioner or even as a chapter official. So um Navo Nation does need to look at that and it really is a responsibility of a council delegate to. Um address that by introducing legislation. So I am thankful that you brought that up today. Uh another part of it does include the conflict at the tractor level. And to me, um you know DOJ, Mr. Roger Bougue. Has really worked at adhering to the needs of the chapters and he has listened to the RDC committee. So there are rules of order that have been introduced to the chapters. I believe there's two options. So I think that would be one training that I would ask ASC to share and to educate. And to assist chapters so that they can adopt the rules of order. When those rules of order are implemented at the chapter level, that alleviates a lot of the miscommunication. That sets the standards for like what uh Shinada mentioned, the codes of conduct. How people need to address the issues and it creates an outline. For the process of a chapter to conduct business on behalf of its constituents. So that would be my other question, when is that training for the rules of order and when do you plan to? Uh also address that within the chapters? Another issue is that. Uh I want to know the process. You did mention that these. These um chapters have been reassigned based on potential conflicts of interests or even equity. So I just want to know the process if a chapter does not. Uh is not able to work with a certain ASC center, what would be the process of them requesting? To be removed from that particular region and moved to a different one? So that would be another question that I have. And then I think that your plan of operation, the organization, I have not seen an organizational chart. Um I don't know if that was included in the plan of operation, but I think that could also be a recommendation to include. So that chapters as well have a better understanding of which role each of these positions play. And I'm going to use an example. We at Chinley Chapter um have transitioned and we do have a new chapter manager. This manager started on Monday. So there's still some confusion as to how. LGA certified chapters are, are using their PAS and also. You know, how they're employing employees. So even at the chapter level, they were referring. Uh the new chapter manager over to ASC. And ASC's response is, we have nothing to do with this. Um didn't provide an outline or step-by-step guidance on what needed to occur. Did not make a phone call to the administrative assistant. So I want to know on your daily record, how are you maintaining records of who comes in for technical assistance? So I would assume there would be a daily log where if a chapter called or either a staff went in or a delegate. How are you maintaining a log of those that seek the technical assistance? Because I think that's important to capture that data so that. At the end of the year, when you're looking at your performance measurements, it, it captures, you know, a general idea of where. There's some commonalities across the chapters of where they need assistance. And then based on that, you would be able to make um thorough recommendations to the Oversight Committee. And some of that may include funding opportunities such as for our software to capture the data. Or either software to create um, you know, these templates for our chapters to follow. But those are the, those are some of the things that I see that can be improved with ASC. And then also just looking at um what you mentioned with the conflicts. Uh there are steps that are outlined for conflicts. And I believe um you did address community members. But community members, uh once these rules of order are implemented. My, I think in there you could have and add a sergeant of arms. You could have, you know, the, the chapter really has uh the leeway to create those process. For people that are conducting themselves disorderly at chapter meetings. And so uh I would just encourage again for ASC to assist the chapters and let them know that. The template is not a final, you know, it's not a final document, but it's a working document that can be changed through the chapter resolution. Voted on by chapter voters. Um and then the other issue is, again, you brought up the chapter budget issues. And even now, um chapters are waiting for the budget to come through. And I know that for some of these chapters. Uh they have to be reminded for monthly reconciliation and that leads to. A lot of times what we see is oversight when they come before us with their corrective action plans. So what type of reminder system do you have in place for all of your chapters? And yes, we know that you're not to hold their hand of the officials, but I think that. You know, the officials should be working with the chapter administration and that's really important. You also have the task of working with general funds and ARPA funds. And so for myself, uh just speaking to my chapter and I will be coming before my committee within. A week or two, I'm still in the five day comment period. But the auditor general did an audit on my chapter that included. Partial ARPA funding and in addition to that, the general funding. So within that, I think that ASC needs to be very clear that. That type of an audit can occur and that's considered the single audit through the auditor general. Who has the authority to randomly select a division, a department or a chapter. And so my chapter just happened to fall into that. And my chapter was also one of the first chapters to receive one hundred percent ARPA funding. So we were the ideal candidate to create the audit to see if our chapter was in compliance with the subrecipient agreement. I think that, you know, for ASC, there does have to be a reporting tool created for our chapters. Because chapters, and I've attended several neighboring communities, the reporting for ARPA. It varies depending on the chapter. So like for instance, in one chapter, they started off with their original ARPA amounts. And then they have the running balance. For another chapter, they started with what their beginning balances and then what was used through the month. So for us as delegates, we're gonna have to report through a quarterly reporting. To US Department of Treasury. And one of the, the technical assistance falls on ASC and the FRF office. And so those are things I think that you need to be aware of because that's already happening in the chapters. Second part is that chapters that receive these ARPA funds. In the ARPA guidelines, they will have to um also complete their own ARPA single audit. Anything expended over seventy thousand dollars would have to be audited and chapters. Did not plan properly to save some of their funding from ARPA to pay for that audit. So now, uh as delegates, we have the opportunity to amend our delegate region plan for ARPA. Um and I don't know how many that you have reviewed or if you even reviewed that. But I think that's another process that we also need to talk about. And the reason is that we're the oversight here as RDC for these chapters. And what I do not want to see is that we are setting up our chapters for failure. And also for them to pay back any US Treasury funds. Because they were not given the proper tools to create a monitoring system for their funds. And although, you know, that's a big task at hand, but ASC does work with the Office of the Controller. You work with OMB and you oversee all of the chapter's budget. So therefore you are in contact daily with our chapters and that's why. I'm asking these questions because we hold ASC to a high standard of how they're supposed to be working with the chapters. So those are just some of the things that I wanted to um bring up here. And I, I think that's very important because we only have a year left. All chapter projects as far as ARPA, they need to be completed by December thirty first, twenty twenty six. All the funds should be expended by June thirtieth, twenty twenty six. And all of them should have been vetted and obligated by December thirty first, twenty twenty four. And so some of the issues that I'm running into as well is that. The Department of Justice is saying that once those plans that the chapter have provided to them. They've been legislated and they cannot be changed. But I think, you know, chapters are going to call upon ASC to help justify some of these changes. So I think that you do have your work cut out for you. And um in here, under your plan of operations, um these are not numbered pages, but. Within the section of authorities and responsibilities under C. It does state that you have to assist. It does state that you have to assist chapters with uniform records and community projects. And so although ARPA is not general funds, but that still counts as their community projects. And so I think, you know, we are looking at your plan of operation. As being universal regardless if they're external funds. And that's how I'm I'm looking at this. So. I I think that there have been conditions of appropriations that were made and that was made on. Your department and I know I did that. And that was because I felt that, you know, I there really needs to be a monitoring mechanism built into this. And that's why I brought that up again, because that is part of your conditions of appropriations. And that's gonna start this coming budget year. So um, Madam Chair, I'll go ahead and turn it back over to you. And thank you for allowing me this time to express my concerns here.
Thank you for that, Honorable Claw. So at this time, I'd like to go ahead and yield time back over to Mr. Charlie for. Response in regards to some recommendation and also. Uh, questions that were posed here by colleagues. Mr. Charlie?
Alright, so uh, thank you, Honorable uh Niz as well as Honorable Claw for the recommendations and some of the comments. As for, I didn't see any questions for Honorable Niz, so thank you for the comments. Uh, for Honorable Claw, uh, response to, let's see, I start here. Uh, technical assistance being defined, uh, definition, general definition that I found. Majority time, what I do find is a lot of time when the people mention technical assistance, it's more so why are they not? Why am I giving you the stock committee and you're not doing anything of it for me? So uh, there has to be responsibility on the chapter staff as well. That has to be where they're learning these things, they're learning it and they're not, some are not picking it up, some just aren't comprehending it properly. So there has to be a self-learning on the chapters as well for the chapter staff. Or some of those items, not all of them, some of them. And there are ones that we can improve training, which is where I also mentioned, um, if the chapter staff can let my team know what are the training needs at their chapter. That way we can better align the monthly trainings or if they need one-on-one, what they need. Uh, majority times we do have um any types of sessions. I'm requesting, are there any questions? Do we have any comments? It is crickets, so, okay. And Honorable K, after you're done, everyone starts coming to you with their questions or emailing you or what have you, so. There is, I would offer opportunities for any type of question that they may have. Sometimes I don't receive any. Emergency management plan, so we have tried to address that. We have been working with um Mr. Dariyazi with Department of Public Health. We have been offering um, I think they're called NIMS. Uh, correct, NIMS training to the chapter official and to chapter staff. Uh, Mr. Yazi has offered, it's time to go to these chapters or have the chapters come here to attend these NIMS training through FEMA. So those have been offered, they have been sent out to chapters. We have had some ASC offices and chapters. Who have taken up that training, not all of them, but it is being offered. And in terms of um emergency management, I also was working with Director um. Previous Director Sandoval, as well to try and address some of these emergency management issues. Um, I know that instance you're pertaining to is that ended, the ended um tornado that happened a couple of weeks ago. And in that instance, um, there was a whole, almost, pretty much a complete turnover. New staff as well as new officials that happened earlier this year. So a lot of them were brand new and they were in the process of, I think they're gonna be getting the training through um Mr. Yazi. For the um, NIM training and emergency management. And uh, let me just make. It's known that some technical systems that is requested, sometimes they are, they're difficult. And the reason that some of them are difficult is there's no black or white writing. Sometimes we have to read between the gray areas to come up with some kind of conclusion or some kind of response. Or there have been times where I would offer a recommendation and. Somebody pulls up a legislation or a memo from ten years ago and says you cannot do that according to this. Okay, so I can't do that, something has to change. Um, there are instances like that and then other times when I'm asked other questions. It may be a personnel matter, so I can't put that in a public forum, I can't put that in a public comment. So there are times where personnel matters, I mean, um, here they don't think. Second session for some of those, so it's kinda similar, there's items I can't disclose and. You know, community members are smart, they know that, they know that I'm not gonna bring those items up. So some of these responses that I do provide, there are gray areas, I do have to consult, I do consult with my team. Other ASC offices and consult with DOJ, I do reach out to other entities. And majority of time that I have to get those responses before I provide a response, so sometime there is a lengthy process. I don't like to get information if I don't know it. Um, and then the rules of order that Mr. Beckett did provide. Uh, had been presented at, I believe, the uh Delcon office was the one that presented, either Delcon and um Western. So to the city, both of them did present, Mr. Beckett did present at those um. ASC trainings, so the officials or the staff were present, they heard his presentation. And we then noted there again, he once again asked if you have any questions or comments following his presentation and. Nobody raised their hand, so. Continuing trend. But uh, we can offer that if the other ASC office chapters, if they request it, we can offer that as well. I'm sure Mr. Beckett will be open to it. And um, just so you know, right now what we're also working on for this next fiscal year is implementation of like a. Not a webinar, but like a video series for some of these items that we see are more common. And hopefully those videos can, we can put them all upload onto the VCD website. So instead of constantly calling for some issue, we can just send them a link and that'll address their their issue. But that is the work for this upcoming fiscal year. Uh, process for requesting a different ASC office, um, at this time right now, I don't have one. I will be, but I did put on my memo, it is for six months and at that time I will be. At the conclusion of the six month, this is verbatim from the memo that I sent. At the conclusion of this six month period, a formal revaluation will take place. Adjustments, modifications or confirmation of the assignments will be determined at this time. Based on performance, feedback from staff and chapters and overall effectiveness of the service delivery. So I'll be monitoring it and I will give a reevaluation at the end of the six month period, so that'll be at the end of the second quarter. And then we can go from there and I will accept if they have any requests, if they have any concerns. But um, I will also say they better, they need to be legitimate requesting concerns, not just. I don't like that person, they look at me weird two years ago, so I don't like them. That's not a legitimate concern. So. And all of their requests and they're appropriately sent to me, I will address them and I will listen to them. Um, let's see, next one, organizational chart. I I do have an organizational chart, I apologize, I just didn't include it with it. But we do have an updated organizational chart, I just forgot to include that portion. Um, the Chinley, Chinley manager position with the PAF and employment issue, I will talk to my staff for that area. Um, and it had been brought up previously, why ASC doesn't or the, we would then include them with the chapter budgets. Why there's just a baseline for it. Um, that's due to a department personal management that does not track the um certified chapters. The chapter manager and administrative services, administrative assistant position are not listed on Department of Personal Management's um listing. So uh, um, majority of time, if they follow an affirmation, pol- personnel policy. We'll just advise them, you know, go through the PAF process. If they have a updated PAF that they utilize, we try to get them. Tell them to follow it, as well as employment, as well as proper advertisement, proper interviews are all conducted. Um, that has been a hit on some chapter audits, they're not properly filling out the hiring documentation. The transfers, the step increases, the interviews, those are issues that have been popping up. So we try to advise certified chapters, this is more so for certified, ASC we handle all not certified. But um, that will be a topic that I will request for my, require for my ASC staff to conduct this fiscal year. Probably within the first two quarters, the training on hiring practices for the chapter staff, cause we did note it on a lot of them. Chapter audits. Last year. Uh, login for assistance, um. I'm sure that they all have a lot of time, what do you call it, emails for requests as well as login sheets at their offices for signing sheets. I'll have to request those. Um, I do know some chapters do have sergeant at arms at their chapter meeting, uh, some have also called for PD to. Be on standby or have notified their local PDs who are close enough. If they're having a meeting, they may have issues. Uh, once again, this is not for all chapters, this is only for a handful of them. Uh, templates, we do offer a template, um, they are advised they can be amended. If they're making a, a big amendment to it, we do advise that they consult with DOJ to make sure that there's a lawful amendment. And we always read up the silences, just another, it's another tool for their toolbox. We don't tell them that it's one hundred percent, this is the way or the highway. It is an advisement, it is a recommendation. But it is never, we're never told, we never tell them that it's set and so it can be amended, but they just have to go through the process. Hello, next for the ARPA funding. Uh, so some of these ARPA fundings were. Created with sometimes without ASC being involved. Um, sometimes some of the, some of the certified chapters, they created working one-on-one with FRF office. Um, I'm not gonna say, I don't know exactly which ones, but I know some of them. Were not consulted on that, so they weren't directly with FRF. Um, in terms of ensuring that that leaders are two percent, that was supposed to be set aside for audits, that should have been implemented at that time. With those who have the SRA, I think there's fourteen chapters currently with SRAs out there. Um, we'll be reviewing those, I'll be bringing those ASC SPBS staff together. To review the SRAs with the new COAs that were presented to our budgets here, uh, in terms of their properly addressed. And I do know a, a couple of certified chapters. Where my SPPS was the one helping develop these documents and push them through as well as writing it for them. Just to make sure it was done. So we'll be putting all that together to address it at the end of the first quarter. We'll be having that ready. And as far as the ARPA budget reporting, uh, that one we're in the process right now. Identifying which ones, where the money was spent in chapter budgets. Some of them made a completely new line item for their chapter budgets. Um, so we just gotta monitor that and see where they're at, that progress, and see what progress they made. And a lot of them have it in their SRA updates, I believe they're reporting monthly. If I'm correct, I mean, I do know Ms. um, before she vacate the position, our manager, Ms. Pauline Thomas. Was requesting those monthly SRA reports from them. Uh, we do have some copies, it's not all of them, so I'm gonna be requesting that from the department manager, Mr. Stewart. Should be having those, so we'll be following up with that. Um, uh, open answer, uh, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Charlie, for your response. Honorable Claw, with that, pretty much um clarified the questions that you had and also recommendations.
Um, yes, I did.
Pushing, so let me go ahead and yield the uh gavel over to Vice Chair Johnson. Uh, Chair Johnson, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, let's just start again, for your presentation, uh. I think co-sponsored a station that's related to sanction the chapter and it was a, it was covered by. And some concerns about, about budget finance and same concerns with budget by a resource delivery and. You know, we're getting a lot of uh these chapters. That, you know, come, I mean, the statistics come from resource delivery and. Um, budget finance and future refresh times or um, say some chapters. And I guess, I know we have policymakers. And I'm trying to figure how we can sit you to have a strong policy in place. Cause you know, one of the things that according to your plan of operation is to monitor expenditures. For chapters. And to me, I'm not, uh, but this is to monitor, you know, you need to take a look at it, it's monitoring the expenditures. And this is something that, how we reduce, I know odds are good. And help you make those, uh, criticals, uh. Maybe not, maybe check on the city life, but we get to you about two, three points. This chapter, maybe finds a two, three, we'll kill. But zero would be great, but we get a lot of major findings to these uh. Odds, track, like tracking the one. So I guess to me, you know, policymakers, I can tell you this is what we should do, this is what I think, I think we should do. To me, you know, we like to work, I like to request RSC to work with you, to how we make. To reduce all these findings at a chapter, chapter level to where. Uh, uh, when honestly that was charged, one of the recommendations was that, I know, and uh. Uh, no good problem, creating, you know, that where, you know. Maybe third chapter will be audit, third, second year, the third will be audit, uh, the third will be on third, third year. The start with it. And in appearance, I see what we are all too. As leaders. Cause we don't have a policy in place to meet that happen. And always expensive, it's always done. But we're getting the other's, the bad's out there to chapters. And I'm seeing, you know, sixty thousand this season transform these audits. So I just wanna, maybe we sit down together and uh, RSC, policy, to get your. Your office or your department strong to, to monitor these uh, to monitor these uh, uh, expenditure at chapter level. And that all, I know, sorry, say policy, independent operation. But something has to be there, there's just too many findings. This chapter, you know, there's too many major finds. Something needs to be done and I'm not an expert and I've been, I was, before I came back as a constable here. As, as soon as I CSC had an exit chapter and uh. Goes back in technical systems. I think your office, there's an ethical system, but again, CSC, they need to learn, you need to have, they need to. Uh, take upon themselves to, 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 to um. To, to know what the, what technical systems you're trying to give them. But I have a prime example. State level. Every single year, training is provided. Training is provided to do the capital link, um, to, 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 to put it to you. It's always the same every year, it's from supply chain that you can, you know. But we have everybody going out of office, we go for two, three days of training. I never take those trains. Because I just ask few questions and change, I remain the same as code and it does, these code will tell me. So it's, it has been changed, uh, so again, by this, I don't have, we are trained for three days. Trying to figure out how to, you know, do your capital projects, we're sitting in Mexico, and this is, is analogy. So it's the same like, we as, we as leaders. You know, we tend to say that provide logical assistance to chapters, but same time as the administration. Should, should know these things already. But the most important thing for is monitoring these funds. I think that's one thing that should bring, uh, to me. This is just the truth that we really need to minimize these financial findings, I need to check every hour. And we do need to, I want to come up with a policy. For, um, I don't know, it's just, I don't know, you guys are experts, you guys are tools and, and data bases. But I'd like to help out to a sponsored station to make that happen. Cause again, you heard that last week when Mr. Charlie. Uh, from budget finance. I think as a resource delivery, oversight and budget finance. Uh, I think we really sit down to how do we fix these uh, findings, uh. You know, expenditures, they're not following the ones you lost and all these findings are happening, so. This is like my comment on Madam Chair, the resource delivery, this, something we need to accomplish, it's a policy just. How do we make that happen? So I think we need to sit down. So I think we need to sit down and talk about that, so, thank you, Manchep, enjoy sitting here.
Pushing, thank you, um, honorable, uh, Chair Simpson for that recommendation. Uh, let's go ahead and yield the gavel over to Vice Chair.
Okay, uh, Mr. Charlie, um. Gonna go to, um, are there any other colleagues that want to, uh. The comments, or questions?
Thank you, uh, Vice Chair, Pro Temp Chair. So, uh, Mr. Charlie, thank you for providing this update to this committee. Um, you know, there's some very great valid, uh, points that. My colleagues had brought up here this morning in regards to some of the concerns surrounding the. Functional activities within the chapter operation. And I know it is a big task that your department is charged with and how to, uh, properly address these issues. Um, you know, comes number one from a behavior of an individual which we obviously cannot. We don't have control over, but I commend the, uh, the fact that your department and your A S C staff trying to. Uh, come to the medium to try to address and find solutions. Or come up with resolutions to these issues. Now, um, I have actually several, um, areas. Um, one of them, of course, um, honorable, uh, Chair Simpson had brought up is in regards to the chapter budget. I know that this committee, um, although Budget and Finance Committee has the final authority, but R D Cs are receiving these. Uh, cap or sanction requests in regards to chapters not expending. Uh, their funds or abiding or adhering to the five management system policy or even. Internal policies that chapters have. And I often wonder, um, I know that you have eight service centers. Um, with the S P P S that's supposed to have oversight and working with chapters individually. And also an A S O to assist as well. And I know that years before chapters were supposed to submit. Uh, passwords and usernames and passwords for the Auditor General. Uh, office to have access to a, um, the bank for these chapters, and I don't know if that's still in place. And I know that there was also a username and a password that was specifically developed for the A S C staff as well. And that really brings to question in terms of monitoring. I know that under the L G A Title twenty-six, there's a monthly monterey, mon, um, monterey, uh, sheet. That chapter officials are supposed to fill out, you know, requesting the staff just so that there is checks and balances, you know, from. Everything in regards to inventory to the financials and policies and, um. Just a, um, context of the five management system. I, you know, just feel like, you know, there is a. A gap right there, I know that we were talking about L G A certified chapters and non-certified chapters, but. How, I don't know if this is something that you and your team with A S C are strategizing on how, what would be the best practice going forward. You know, I understand that there are some chapters that have never been audited before. I don't know, uh, number one, I'd like to request that of you is to provide to this committee. Of all the one hundred and ten chapters, how many have not been, um, audited? And how many habits been audited in probably decade? And I think I sent out an email to. Your division director in regards to all the outstanding audits that, uh, this committee had. Received in the form of a report from Auditor General's office and what are the status on those outstanding caps and sanctions? You know, we, and I know that Budget and Finance Committee was talking about this where if a certified chapter. Is sanctioned, there are some certified chapters that have been sanctioned for literally a decade. That just tells you that they're not, it's not their priority to get out of sanction, yet we continue to appropriate monies to. Those certified chapters on an annual basis to continue the, um, non-adherence to policies and non-compliant. And now, um, and it was questioned to us by Budget and Finance, what is R D C's plan? And now do we do, do we decertify them maybe two years after they got sanctioned? Um, if they're not trying to fulfill, um, to get out of sanction status. Because they're not doing themselves good because we've got to remember ten percent of their annual appropriation is being withheld. So it, it, I don't know, there has to be a better mechanism, and I don't know if these models to Title twenty-six before models, cause I understand. The president is in favor of Model one and three, and Model one and three, Model one is basically saying. That we want to certify, certify all chapters across the Navajo Nation. And yet we have these very issues that Chair Simpson had mentioned. You know, the, the increase of, um, funds not being expended right or adherence to internal policies or the F M S is not. It's not there, so is it really favorable to certify all chapters? You know, and, and that's a big question for us. Then Model three is basically to address the supervision aspect, you know, that's a, one of the chapter officials to. You know, go through this particular steps and with Department of Personnel Management to be, to understand the personal policies, to supervise C S C. Um, and A M Ss that are non-certified chapters. And then not only that, but bring everyone to the same level of utilization of the five management system, because I understand it's inconsistent now. So that's the solution here with Title twenty-six amendments that we have, but you go further beyond. And, um, what about all these other areas that haven't been, um, addressed? So I really think that, um, we look to your department and your key staff to bring these solutions to, um. This committee and probably possibly even to full council. So with that, there has to be better practice in place, um, Director, um, Charlie, in regards to that. Because oftentimes we're just going round and round, and oftentimes we're questioning, what is R D C doing? You know, and, and again, you know, do we now, you know, get stern, and I think we're trying to. Um, work with, you know, the department and the division to really come down and does it require some sort of a sit down and. Um, I don't know if you have, you had your strategic session with, um, A S C as well. But it would, uh, it would be nice to be part of the discussion with this committee to really understand what is the path going forward for A S C? What changes are they, um, looking at amending in terms of policy? And then not only that, but, um, looking at, um, every aspect that you brought up here in regards to your plan of operation. What is working, what is not working, and how are we going to address what is not working with the current department? So those are some of the concerns that I have, and the other one is, and I'm glad that Honorable Claude brought that up. Emergency response plan, I sent out an email, I don't know where we're at on this because. I indicated that off of that Oak Ridge fire within my region, the two chapters that I represent didn't even have a. Plan in place nor certee. So that was one of the conditions when, um, emergency funds were appropriated, I believe last fiscal year. Or this past fiscal year or last fiscal year, that was one of the conditions, and yet we haven't even heard anything from A S C. Can we get an update on that too, please? In regards to how many chapters have their emergency response plan in place? And it needs to be approved by chapter membership with a proper cert in place. The other area is the capital improvement plan, and I don't know how closely you work with your internal department, C P M D. You know, are we just working in silos under Division of Communities Development? But this year for F Y twenty twenty-six, again, we had to waive the C I P plan. Remember, it stated in law that it's supposed to go parallel with this comprehensive budget. At how many years have we been just waiving that? And it's a big concern, especially as lawmakers. So this is an area that, um, I don't know with A S C, but we did bring C P M D here before, a couple of weeks ago. And, um, they were supposed to have something by the first part of September, but after conversing with Chair Paris of B N F. She said that we're already waiving that because, um, per the law under the BIM. It's supposed to be presented to Budget and Finance Committee six months in advance before. So I told, we told C P M D to have it readily available by, um, by May, by even April, that would be great of next year. So that we would have a plan that we can present to Budget and Finance Committee. So, um, and that's an area that, who, who takes the lead on that to discuss this with the chapters? I would think it would be a joint effort between A S C and C P M D to really start planning a, um, measurable C I P. Uh, deliverable or product. So that's another area, so, um, I know Michelle Peterson is Department Manager for C P M D, but I would really. Highly encourage you to start collaborating with that department because in a sense it is a chapter's responsibility as well. The other part, you've asked for recommendation, I really think that the chapter officials. The newly elected officials and even the current chapter staff need to constantly be trained and re. Iterating the concept of segregation of authorities, why is that important? Anytime you're dealing with money or accounting, the segregation of authorities is very important. I think that's where you need to provide a training to, um, the new chapter officials so that they understand why. That one person is not responsible for everything because it will be an audit issue. Now, you've also asked for a recommendation. You say that you provide these educations to the, um, chapter officials and chapter staff, but there's often no questions. Maybe through a delegate region meeting, start collaborating with the delegates. So that they can bring all their chapter officials and their chapter staff together at a central point and having those discussions. And, um, I know that Dr. Ness and some of these other, um, colleagues of mine on council have that delegate region chapter meetings. Uh, so that they bring in, um, like maybe Department of Ag, Land Department, Personnel Management. Um, D, um, Department of Emergency Management, and then also maybe like the county. Or even Water Resources, because all of this is just, you know. Uh, in the area of under chapter operation, and I think that's where a lot of these officials and chapter staff will get their. Um, questions and some of these, uh, are, uh, answers with questions that they have. And you've got to remember, I don't know when it started, but there's just this dichotomy that's been created. I don't know when. We have these subcommittees under their chapters. We have veterans organization, we have farm board, we have senior center head start grazing. Why is it that the chapter administration staff and the chapter officials feel like these. Committees that were supposed to be under the chapter, now they're being pushed away, like you go do your, you get, you have your own money. We don't need to do it in our partnership agreement. And we've got to remember that the chapter through an approved chapter resolution, the community was requesting. For these various services, and now we have chapters that don't even want to do anything with these other subcommittees. And I think that's the reason why, why they also get the money, because veterans are registered voters there, grazing reps, permit holders are registered voters there, the chapter. I don't know how we can bring everyone back together because right now there is a big distance, a big gap right there, and, um. So those are just some of the recommendations that I just wanted to share since my colleagues had mentioned that. And we definitely can look at the area of the conflict of interest, and I think our attorney, uh, Mariana here has heard that. In regards to, um, A S C staff playing that. That compound role, one of them recently, who's, um, A S C staff, who's a commissioner. And now plays a role on Navajo government development. So again, you know, the dual, um, responsibility to as a chapter official and the A S C's. Um, employee that does play, you know, I mean, that does draw concern, and thank you for bringing that up. And what we'll do is, um, if you can formally put that in writing. In a memorandum to Resources and Development Committee and our legal counsel here. And we'll definitely reach out to DOJ to hopefully see where those amendments need to be made under Title twenty-six. So I just wanted to, uh, provide those recommendations, but we are here, we want to be able to work with you. And, um, and see how we can navigate through this in hopes that. All chapters can come back to the grounds of working together as a team. So that's my wish, and that's what, that's what I hope for, so thank you again, Mr. Charlie, and so I have, Vice Chair.
Thank you, uh, Chair Sue, so at the same, like to give the floor back over to our president, Mr. Claude.
All right, yeah, yeah, no, um, I was simply was here, thank you for comments. And, um, on ways is, thank you again as well for the, uh, comments and recommendations. Uh, so we'll go ahead and go to, so. In terms of the cats and the F M S audit issue with the chapters, uh, there are. There's gonna always be issues here and there, we can try our best to monitor, monitor. As mentioned, that we do are in a monitor capacity as well as writing it out if we find anything. Um, during a monthly review, we put in a memo and send the chapter to fix these issues. Or at times that they, um, what we get allowed to from the community at the chapter level is for some expenditures, we have a checker resolution, so therefore we're able to go forward. Um, us as A S C, if we find it to be questionable or potentially not compliant, we do write to them. And let them know, you know, this expenditure may be questionable, um, either justify or find another avenue. Uh, but at the end of the day, most of the time if the chapter wants to proceed with it, against our advisement. They do push forward with it, cause that is at their local governance. You know, we also do get also political pressure on both sides, community, political as well as chapter pressure. For somebody's payments to go through or for somebody's checks to be printed, it is done. So those, yeah, those different issues, they're all unique in their own sense. Um, in terms of A S C having the, um, banks, for a bank, so majority time, it's Wells Fargo. Uh, we do have some monitoring mechanisms in place, we have the ability to flag. Uh, expenditures or if, um, an amount, I believe is over a thousand dollars goes out from the chapter, we do get a flag. And it's just for our information to check and make sure that that purchase or that check that went out was something that they were planning. So and also institutions will also deposit it pay for them, will assist them if they're having issues with Wells Fargo, I have a good relationship, working relationship with, um, Ms. Colleen Dale. Who is, who is the Wells Fargo representative for Navajo Nation, so I, I do work with her pretty good. Um, in terms of the monthly monitor, she said is part of the BIM that was put in, that is in there, and I do. Every chapter I go to, I always ask, are you doing the monthly monitoring sheets? There is a space for all three officials as well as the C S C. And I do advise them, make sure you're filling that out properly, make sure everyone is involved and. If not involved to approve it, and at least involve it knowing what's on that document. And that is under responsibility of the chapter to do that, to make sure that they're completed. Um, as far as A S C, we try to push for those to be completed monthly. Obviously, that's where the conflicts will come in sometimes, some officials won't come in, some chapter staff refuse to do them. But we try to push them to get those done. Um, and thank you to B F C for the budget balance reporting on the wind system. That was included in this year's BIM to be completed by the fifteenth of every month. So thank you to them for including that, that was something that we needed. As we were always told, why do I have to input it by the tenth every month, you know, why does it not, uh? Let's, let's hit it there that include it, please, they put it in, so it's fifteenth of every month, it should be updated. Um, audit, I could definitely get to, um, audit updates for what my, my staff are tracking right now. Um, in terms of which chapters have not been audited, I am not hundred percent sure, but I can. Um in terms of which chapters have not been audited, I am not hundred percent sure, but I can get auditor general, Ms. Jones. Um we've been, I've been trying to work more collaborative. With them, I do understand that in the past there have been. Um as you identified. Uh separations, you know, people have been separated, you don't want to work so and so, I don't want to work with so and so. For me, I try to include, include these different departments and these, I want to work with them, I'll bring them in, I want to reestablish some of these lost. I guess lost connections that has been lost previously. Uh decertification, I know I've mentioned that in previous uh meetings that there was a process for that. And that's not just that our requests and our recommendation, we have also been approached by some chapters who wish. Is there a decertification process? We wish to. You know, either maybe the official or the staff, either it's too much for them or they wish to just be uniform on the. Navajo Nation or. I guess the responsibility of it, they want to mitigate some of it, get rid of some of it. So I know there has been talks of that and. My last time was just, is there a decertification? I was told, no, all right, Roger, move on. For the time being, that's way out of my abilities right now. As for the four models for the chapter, um once again, even in in terms of my own staff, they have different viewpoints. Um me, I just try to stay neutral, so I really don't give an opinion on it. I just go with what everybody and our leaders all decide. But they ask for my two cents, I'll give them my two cents. Strategic session uh for this year, no, we have not had a strategic session yet. Our chapter official orientations burned all my budget, so I don't have anything for strategic sessions. Well, we do plan to conduct one as a division as a whole, as a department as well, probably within the first quarter, so. We are planning one. Uh emergency response plan, and so my understanding for that COA was not a response plan, but an emergency fund management plan. Is how it was worked, that COA. So we helped, we did help the chapter about providing the emergency fund management plan template for them. Um that is, I do recall. Requesting for clarification if it was a response plan or a fund management plan. And the wording did say fund management plan. Um but I have, so I have talked with um. The representative when she was here as well as Mr. Yasi, who works for Department of Public Health. His expertise in is in emergency management. To see if the three of us or the three can come together to help make a some kind of plan. For the chapters, whether they're uniformed or at least give them. An outline of something that they can work off of for their individual chapters. So it is. Little process and my last understanding is Director Sandoval is now vacated.
Sharon?
I'm not sure.
Sharon Sandoval?
Yeah, is she still here or?
She's still here.
Okay.
We just talked to her right from high.
Oh. All right, well, all righty then, you know, but um so if it's for a response, emergency response plan, we can definitely work on that. Not a emergency response expert, but I'm trying to consult with those who are, as their expertise field for this. Or segregation authority. And yeah, I do understand the fact of, you know, officials when they're giving the direct. Local supervision of chapters, we do try to reinforce, you know, there is segregation duties, there is a Department of Personal Management manual that they gotta. A strictly learning. I will say that is going to be partially on them to learn as well. When I first came in as a department manager. The first thing I did was read the Department of Personal Management manual. And I do reference it probably at least minimum five times a week. So on that I did, it's just in general practice as a supervisor, you gotta learn that manual front and back. So. And there are times that, yes, there are officials who don't like to reference it, but that's where I have to step in sometimes. They don't like that either, so you'll probably get complaints on me when I do that. Uh they'll get reaching me, that is a good point. I have attended one of those for um on about the next, so. I would, yeah, okay, go follow up with that internally and repeat that better. So I do appreciate that recommendation. Uh subcommittees under the chapter. Just from observation. A lot of it has to do with money. They, once they start getting their funds and they start separating the funds, saying this is mine, mine, that's yours, that's probably where the separation began. Just from observation. Um there are, and once again, this is not for all one hundred and ten chapters, there are some that work great with their subcommittees and there's some that don't. And a majority of time what I see is media. People, people issue, people personally, um some like to take ownership, some are alphas. Some don't like to take ownership, some kind of roll with the punches. But in terms of that, we try to just stick and we do appreciate the added um language I was putting for the veteran funds. That does open it up for us and we, we at ASC, we try to stick to what legislation is up for them and what the language does say. We try to keep away from great areas as best we can. On that, we do appreciate that. And memo for ASC for the um ASC staff and officials commissioned, I will get you that probably help within this week. And thank God my sis.
Thank you, Mr. Charlie. Chair Susan. Any other questions from my colleagues?
Okay, thank you, um Vice Chair for your assistance and. At this time, I'd like to go ahead and yield time over to Honorable Vice Chair Johnson.
Thank you, Chair Susan. So, Mr. Charlie, thank you for your presentation. And um I'd just like to uh. Looking at your um. Conflicts at chapters or disruptive behavior or chapters and uh that was dealt with a couple of years ago. At one of my chapters, there was some hostility there. And the former Attorney General and uh the officials as well as um. ASC, I believe they all, you know, they um. They did have a. Issue out of statement that they won't be tolerated and anybody that. Is hostile or any type of aggressive behavior on Navajo Nation property within the confines of the Navajo Nation, you know. Chapter compound. Will be charged at the fullest extent of the law. So we're not tolerating any of that. So that was guidance by DOJ, uh Laura Gay. And then that time the Attorney General. So um you know, things like that and regarding the officials, I believe there's a process through ethics and um. Ethics process, so there's a process there. Which is stated to discipline, so um I'm going to move on to uh. Sanctioned chapters, I have a chapter that has been sanctioned for quite some time now due to records. Those records are. Un, I guess recoverable. Due to inventory and um so at what point do the the nation, the Navajo Nation ASC just. Move on from that, you know, I mean, it's it's been a long time, that's one reason why they're sanctioned. And um also the sanction chapters officials are being deducted a certain percentage of their pay for a long time. And. You know, now they got out of office and now they want their money. When are they going to be paid, you know? Out. And I do have a chapter official that is pretty adamant about asking, when am I going to get, you know, my payout from this and. So that's a question I have and also I see within your um. Your plan of operation where it says the ASC's role is to reduce. But the ASC will continue to monitor funds appropriated by the Navajo Nation Council. And another purpose of the ASC is serve as a communication nexus between the political subdivisions and Navajo Nation. I was at the, I think you were there, were you at the Western Agency Council? Were you there? Last week, there were several questions that needed to be answered by ASC, which the community development, the VCD director couldn't answer. So um but. The concern there was chapters that didn't have that communication, you know, to the chapters. Then uh moving on to the. Letter C authorities and responsibilities. The chapter CSC reports to the delegated supervisor, who is the delegated supervisor? Is it the ASC? Is it the delegate? Is it, you know? Who who is actually the supervisor of the CSC? Like to get that clarification and moving on to number four. Um B assist chapters with their budgets and ensure that a chapter expenditures comply with ethical. Navajo Nation laws and policy procedures and um. Want to uh. Share a. A paraphrased uh email um that was provided to me. Need support of ASC. There's been multiple requests made to ASC, Mr. Charlie. Um the ASC subdivision reached out to them for training and assistance with the chapter's MIP. Um they are responsible for the MIP from two thousand twenty two to March two thousand twenty five. With the ongoing current audit, we are undergoing from the auditor general, some issues have come to light. And we have asked for the MIP to be placed back at the chapter office. We were able to have the MIP placed back at the office in February eighteenth, two thousand twenty five. Met with some opposition from the ASC about having to come out to our site to conduct financial reports and weekly checks. So. If there is findings of audit um. During the clock, during when ASC. Had that system. So who should be? You know, fixing this audit finding. No, I don't, to me, I don't think it should be the chapter, it should be ASC since, you know, they had it for the, within that. Within three years. And um. Just wanted to share that with you and then the um. Also, that falls in line with your. On number four. F assist chapters of becoming government certified, maintaining compliance with. Your five management system. The fiscal records, property procurement and personnel. H ensure meet various deadlines such as budgets and time sheets um. I've been to uh several chapter meetings where the budget wasn't um produced by ASC. And also who assists chapters with their corrective action plan. There's a lot of um. You know, um questions on that, but um. You know, I look forward to uh working with your department and, you know. I know you're trying, I know your team's trying and I do see the trainings out there. But again, you know, here before I receive asking for guidance and, you know, direction on. Moving forth on some of these concerns, you addressed some of these concerns. So I'd just like to uh get your response on some of those uh questions and comments that I made. I'm sure.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Vice Chair Johnson, for those questions. So, Mr. Charlie, I'd like to go ahead and yield time back over to you.
All righty, uh I can, Honorable Johnson, for the comments and for the questions. Uh so for the um. The issue with the chapter in terms of where DOJ and Attorney General was, was it a memo? That was developed for that or what was the procedure?
Yeah.
All of that into. You know, there's a record of it somewhere.
Vice Chair.
Yeah, there is a record, um it was a statement, um as well as a memo, um I believe uh. So DOJ chapter unit, Mr. Laura Laura Gay has that, um he was part of that uh. Those uh those meetings as well, so.
All right, I'll definitely look for that. Uh next one for uh sanction chapters, uh that are hurt compound. Uh this can be paid out, so as of right now, we're sanctioning chapters. When a chapter sanctioned, you know, we withhold ten percent and or official than we the three percent of their second.
That was ten.
The ten, ten percent, okay, ten percent, sorry, ten percent of their second. For um during the time that they're sanctioned, uh when those funds are just kind of put aside, they're kind of set aside, put to a little savings account. They will get paid out those funds when the chapter gets out of sanction. So that's kind of like their pinnacle at the end of the rainbow for getting out a sanction. Um there was um. Years ago, I was informed that that did happen for a chapter, they did get out of sanction and those funds did come back. Um and then all the reason I came to know about this story was there was an issue of a couple of officials where there's some of their stipend funds withheld. They unfortunately have passed, so we had to determine through DOJ and who would get that, those funds. So it it is a long process and there's some issues like that. And that's how I got to know that, that's how the funds get sent back, because once they are out of sanction and that. Funds are given back to the chapter and the officials. Who funds were taken out of, they all get that money back. So let's say that the chapter has been sanctioned for ten years. Three administrations, all those prior officials will get their. Pretty much a reversal on those, but that's only once the chapter gets out of sanction. Um and I do want to emphasize for sanction chapters and for caps for everything going on, audits at the chapter level. It is a collective effort. It is not just one entity doing it. It is not only ASC, it is not only the chapter officials. It's not only the chapter staff, all of them have to be working together in order to properly. Go do these audits and properly get out of sanction. It is a collective effort. And it's not just one, it's a team. Uh direct local supervisor, uh let's go first to the um. Certified, so certified chapters and our, in what our understanding is the direct local supervisor, who is the supervisor of the chapter manager. Traditionally would be the chapter president unless there's a conflict of interest or the person just doesn't want to, then. The vice president or the secretary chair could also be delegated into that role. But that at the certified chapter is up to the officials, they have, they possess that authority to determine who their. PLS is going to be. Can they delegate that to one of my SPPS or myself as department manager? Yes, they could, but that is up to their discretion. For the CSCs and non-certified chapters, um same thing, it is traditionally the chapter president, but they have to receive training and personnel. To assume that role and it can be anyone, three officials. All I need, some do submit um chapter resolutions in support of who they wish that PLS to be. I do take that into consideration when writing up, I am, I delegate, I produce the delegation memo. For these, for the non-certifies. But I usually do that, the requests, if they delegate, let's just say the vice president is going to be the supervisor. They'll send me a memo saying this is who we're going to delegate, um if they wish to check the resolution they made, let's say it is not required. For that, then I'll just rewrite the memo, delegating the vice president as the uh direct local supervisor until. They wish to make a change. Or if my staff need determine that the, they cannot fulfill the role, then we can either. Delegate one of my staff or we may ask the officials with another one who wish to take the role. Um that did, I had to exercise that one time this year. Thus far, I am currently the supervisor for a. Uh CSC at one of the non-certified chapters. And that was just due to issue of concern that came up and a lot is protecting employee rights. Um in terms of the MIP for issues and concerns when ASC had it, I would have to review that. Sure, which chapter that was, I'm sure I'll find out and just kind of go over the history on it. MIP, yeah, so MIP is always an issue. The way we handle it is I send my administrative services officers, they go through the MIP training. And then the account maintenance specialists at the chapter level. When once they complete their ninety days, um their introductory period satisfactorily, then we can send them to MIP training just due to that is a significant um financial investment. I'd say roughly about a thousand dollars for the cost of the training. So that is the way we try to minimize those and my staff, I just, once ASO complete their introduction period as well, I send the MIP training as well to our department. And um we are in the process of right now, some of the, some of my staff are producing uh videos or presentation sheets pretty much how to trouble shoots, I guess, some of the more common problems that the chapters are having. So we are, we are producing resources that they can revert to when needed. But I can, I'll have the research on that one, the issues that happened when ASC had the MIP system. Thank you, sir.
Vice Chair, did that answer all the questions you posed here to Mr. Charlie?
Yeah.
Okay, so just for your information, colleagues, um we did have Articulate General, Ms. Janine Jones, send an email so that this chapter audit status information will help this discussion. I'm sending these reports on the certified and non-certified chapters. Have the chapters under CAT review right now, it's, um it has, so let me go ahead and forward this email to other members of the committee as she just emailed Ms. Nakai, Honorable Claw and I, so now I'll go ahead and CC um Mr. Charlie as well. Vice Chair, follow up?
Thank you, Mr. Charlie. Let's move on, follow up on what you just stated about the non-certified supervision of the CSC. If I heard this correctly, it can be a chapter official that has gone through the training. And then it will be ASC. Did I hear that correctly? And then the certified chapter is the chapter official, chapter manager. Right? Is that what I just heard? So the chapter manager, their supervisor is the chapter president or the vice president?
It could be the secretary.
It could be one, any of it.
Yeah, it could be the secretary chair as well.
Then we just identify through a memo.
Okay, so for a memo, okay.
Yeah. If there's no memo, then by default.
So you, so what I heard is you can take a memo or a resolution or both?
So I would, I would take a memo from the officials. Um a chapter resolution, if they wish to have one, is fine, but it is not required.
So I have a, a question regarding the hiring. I have, there's a chapter out there that doesn't have any chapter staff. There's um there's uh wanna say three to four that have applied for the position. And yet it's pending ASC's approval. Um I would like to get, ask why, you know, this um what are we waiting for from ASC that's holding back, you know, these, because there's a CSC, an AMS. So for this chapter to uh fully function, so I'd like for you to respond to that.
Alright, hey, God, look, I'm, so just to be clear, this is for a non-certified, non-certified, okay? So the process right now currently, let me do a little bit of history on why somebody's, why how we came to where we're at now. Uh previously through Department Personal Management, when I first came in, um I was told that some of these positions, they would make an applicant pool, they would take in applicants and they would not review applicants until they had about five to six applicants. So sometimes you would have um advocates waiting in these portals or pools for up to six, seven months. And I always found that out when I hired an office assistant that she had been waiting for about the seven months. And that was due to Department Personal Management's practice of waiting until they had about five to six applicants available. Uh once that happened, I did reach out to Department Personal Management and I requested that every two weeks, once the position closes, if we can get any um referrals. So uh just to be clear, um chapters, positions, we get the applicants who are personal, Department Personal Management, they do advertise for the ten working days. They advertise a position and then what ASC receives, we receive referrals. We receive the qualified applicants. So let's just say, I know for one, we recently did, we had ten, we had five applicants, we were referred four. So we received those four applicants and that one person was deemed not qualified. So that's where the, I guess the breakdown is, is there's a difference between an advocate and then a qualified applicant. Once I receive it at my office, I send it out to my staff and they are to interview that position within ten working days and also provide me a um that determination. And I do insist that they ask for some chapter official involvement, just so that's going to be who they're working with. Um at least as far as the CSC position goes. But I do require that my staff complete the interviews within ten working days of us receiving the referral. So from the time it's advertised, that's about two weeks, from the time from the applicants to receiving a referral could be anywhere from one to two weeks. And then from there, I require my staff to do it within ten working days, so that's another two weeks. So that's about roughly about the timeline I try to stick to. So it could be, sometimes it could be shorter, sometimes it can be longer. And then after that, once they do that, they schedule their interviews and then they give me a third decision, which is either hire or send for re-advertising. And there have been multiple times where maybe there's no qualified applicants and I just get an email from Department Personal Management that says there are no qualified applicants, no referral, what do you wish to do? Right away, we always send that with request to re-advertise. So it just varies. Thank you, sir.
Would you, uh Vice Chair with follow up?
Yeah, this is um, this is one of the issues I had with one of my chapters is that um they had a um, I believe a an office specialist or an individual that worked there for quite some time and was doing the AMS position. There was a chapter, a chapter trip was put in there and they just needed to fill that position, but there was no qualified, no there was not enough candidates for that pool. And I did meet with personnel regarding this. My question on this is uh President Nigret issued that memo for personnel to hire immediately. Do you adhere to OPBPs? You know? That that memo that you put out there for personnel to hire immediately? Do you guys adhere to that or? You know, to hire, that's your response?
Alright, sir, uh so it's honorable Johnson, uh memo put out by President Nigret regarding immediate hires. Uh we do, so in that process, once we determine which applicant they want to hire, we send them the um we send them the memo, you have been selected, if they accept it, we start the onboarding process hopefully within a week. And then that is, and the memo is state that they will be hired on and they will be employed even pending their OBI. The OBI background check, so that is, they do have ninety days, it is a ninety days to complete that OBI check. And we have had a couple instances where the employee at the time, they were not able, just due to some issue that OBI where they couldn't complete it. All we do is issue an extension memo on it for them so they could continue to employ them. So we are hiring them immediately, even without an OBI clearance, so that's what the memo for the immediate hire is. Because previously, uh we could not hire until they had cleared that OBI background check. And that process would take thirty days, sixty days, it could take a while. But right now, we do hire them immediately as soon as we get the confirmation and then we wait up to ninety days on their OBI background check if we receive them. So we don't, you know, we don't wait on that. And then there are some instances where they, one, where they came back with an unfavorable, but we worked with them, we worked with uh uh a judge who was working with them on that case and they're able to get it processed with another thirty days, they cleared it, that employee is still working. So we are pushing, we do hire, I do push to try to get them hired and working right away. Yes, sir.
I do have Chair Ness with um question, comment?
Thank you, Madam Chair, committee members. Um as I'm listening here, Madam Chair, in reference to the resolution or the memo or the immediate supervisor of a chapter manager, now as I recall, some of my chapters, five, I have six chapters, five of them are LGA certified chapters. Mr. Charlie, I believe now there's going to be some issues. And this is why it's very important, committee members, that we amend Title twenty-six. Some of my chapters, FMS, have been approved years ago by TCDC. In their Under Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual, it states that whoever becomes the immediate supervisor upon a consensus by the chapter officials will be approved by a chapter resolution because. So if ASC or DCDC, DCD kind of insinuates to the chapter that all you need is a memo, they're not following the FMS if they say that. So in order to be on one page, I believe it's either or. Which shall we go with? Which shall we recommend to Title twenty-six? If the FMS says resolution and DCD says a memo is okay, that doesn't go well with me because I'm going to point something out here, uh Vice Chair. If there is a litigation that happens at a chapter level, the attorneys that are being represented by a client will request a resolution of, of that, that's why it's important, not a memo by DCD and their recommendations. It should be by, it should be in Title twenty-six, so when we start talking about it, we need to put that in there. And it should be by a resolution. That way, if the chapter becomes a liability and they need to pay this client back, let's say fifty thousand dollars back pay, a resolution should suffice, not a memo. That's what I would recommend. So quite a logical of a C. A memo by chapter officials or a resolution approved by the chapter, approved for the whole community. You see, some of the committee members would say, I do not approve this reimbursement of fifty thousand dollars because this would never approve by the chapter constituents. Let the chapter officials pay that, not us. That is the only, the only side case that. So it would be better to have a chapter resolution that said that this chapter president or the chapter vice president, one of them, all of them were to oversight, should be appointed the immediate supervisor of an LGA certified chapters, chapter manager. So I just want to point that out, thank you.
Actually, thank you, uh Chair Ness, for those um comments, I do have that noted here when we're having those Title Sixth Amendments discussion. I know that um we did talk about it briefly when we discussed it here with um uh General Counsel, Mr. Roderick Begay, I believe it was this past Thursday. So um again, that would be an area for clarification, yes. So um, Mr. Charlie, I do sincerely appreciate you coming here before this committee, but I think that there's a long outstanding list of um areas that needs to be discussed in depthly. And I think it's really, um it's more so crucial to have the departments along with legal counsel like Mr. Roderick Begay and possibly even Catherine because she represents the DC DCD unit of DOJ as well to make amendments. One of them is we need to start, and and I'm just trying to figure how we're going to do this. Um we're really have uncertainty in regards to how October first going forward is going to hook for council because we have no operating budget. So um we're trying to um find ways to rectify that issue. But the decertification process would have to be, because I know that there are quite a few certified chapters out there that that ask, how do we decertify? Because we're not, we're not favorable certification because of, you know, X amount of reasons. So we can have that discussion and also um when we schedule those Title twenty-six amendment uh amendments, uh public hearing, we really need to start talking or um listening and taking those comments into consideration when we're going to refine the Title twenty-six amendments. Um I'm hoping that there will be a good turnout for these public hearings. So um it is our um mission to um market the public hearings on Title twenty-six amendments. Because one of the things that we would like to do as twenty-fifth RDC is to hopefully make those amendments in hopes that all tractors across the Navajo Nation, whether they're certified and non-certified, will have, you know, that same level of operation within their um functional areas within a chapter. And uh so I might, I wanted just to state that, so we definitely, you know, need to work with our advisor here and how do we um plan that particular meeting discussion? Because it's going to be hitting on like the personnel issues, the area, the um fiscal area. And I don't know if property is going to be, you know, an area as well. Of course, risk management and property management was a key in that. And of course, you have the records management, as Honorable Vice Chair Johnson had mentioned that. You know, and in terms of archiving or how the um record keeping system is within these uh chapters and also the procurement side of it. I know that there's procurement process for non-certified and certified chapters, but how how do we try to bridge that to make maybe a one type of a process? So with that um amendment of Model One, you know, address that issue. So there's, there's still um yet a lot to be discussed and um when we're talking about Title twenty-six amendment, so I just want to have um to to put that on your radar. Now, the next thing is um, so why does a account maintenance specialist have to wait until after they're done with their probationary period to go to MIP training? Would that kind of have a negative impact on their ninety day evaluation because they don't even really know how to navigate the MIP system? I mean, I think that's where, that's where we talk about employee empowerment. And that's where we're failing as an employer, saying, okay, we hired this individual to be accounting specialist, but they don't know how to navigate MIP. And yet we're saying, okay, while you finish your probationary period first before we send you on this training. And when it comes to their ninety days evaluation, it's not going to look good, so I don't know um how how that um uh internally needs to be addressed, especially for a new employee. And then the other one is um I would hope that uh chapters would work together to um I guess, um exchange information for best practices and like um having them come together and talking amongst themselves as hurdling over certain challenges or barriers from the past, this is how we've done it. And that's usually good, but um you know, uh working relationship among chapters, but why is a ASC office discouraging chapters not to work together? And that type of partnership in circumstances where ASC is possibly overworked? in circumstances where ASC is possibly overworked with trying to address other areas? And I just think that, you know, some chapter managers or coordinators has some really great expertise to share to other chapters. Why are we discouraging that? I mean, it just doesn't make no sense. So maybe this is something that you would need to reach back out to your, to your ASC offices and try to maybe make that, you know, something that would be more, I think, beneficial. Because I know, I know that some ASC staff don't come out to chapters a lot because they think certain chapters are doing great. So with what Auditor General Jones's report, she did mention of the non-certified chapters, there's Lake Valley, Pinedale, Forest Lake, Copper Mine, and the Nahanzad that's never been audited. So you might want to look into those and see if those can be put on the radar for those chapters to be audited. And I believe those are the only report, but I did share that report with you as well from Auditor General's office. But thank you, Mr. Charlie. So I don't know if you want to have final comments or responses?
I can provide, provide response to the AMS.
Okay, please.
Thank you, Honorable Jesus. So just to re-elaborate on the why I, why I asked or why, pretty much why I said AMSs will go to MIP training after their ninety days. This goes off of two prior instances. One was an account maintenance specialist and the other one was an administrative assistant. So one certified, one non-certified. They were hired and within two weeks, I believe they were sent to the MIP training. And as I mentioned, the MIP training is a thousand dollars just for the initial training. On top of that, the travel expenses for the training. So that is a significant investment by the chapter. And when those two employees return, about a week later, we receive their two week notice. Due to the complexity or due to the tough understanding, due to, you know, they probably technically they'll be working with that kind of software. We don't know, all we know is within two weeks, we received their two week notice that they wish to not move forward. And that was after the chapter had put this significant amount of money into their training. But in that ninety days, they are introduced to items on that MIP. They're introduced to the form, the documents needed to print checks. They are shown how to make these checks. They're shown who needs to sign them. Pretty much all the steps without them initially actually getting into the system and completing the task. But everything else around it, that's what they're graded on for that ninety days to understand that this is what's going to be required of you. And that's, and then once they complete, then we can send them to the jury. Just due to the significant amount of funds put into it. And we believe that after ninety days, if they're, they're still around, then okay, they're willing to take that next step. They've been introduced to all of that, to that, I guess you'd say.
Good question. Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Charlie. Honorable Claw.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do want to bring up two things that were mentioned here earlier. One of them was that we were talking about how the supervisory role is identified. And I am thankful that Honorable Ness did bring that up. And it's dependent upon the FMS and how, which system the chapter is under. So as we heard from the report from Mr. Roderick Begay, that there are several different ones that exist. And depending on when the chapter receives their certification, that's what they abide by. So I think one of the other issues that I did hear was we're hearing about certified chapters versus non-certified and how they are hiring employees. And so I just want to also reiterate that based on the presentation here today, that certified chapters do process their own VHS. One of the questions I think that we as a committee also have to think about as we move forward with our government reform is that we heard here that the chapter manager position as well as administrative assistant position, those two are completed by the certified chapter. And so what that means is that, in essence, these two positions do serve at the, under the authority of the delegated supervisor. And in that sense, then, you know, I think that negotiations when it comes to hiring, they're working with the elected official that's designated. And so I want that to be very clear because ASC oftentimes does overstep their technical assistance authority. And they try to interpret laws when it's not necessary because it is outlined within Title twenty-six. So I, I also want to just put that on our to-do list so that we can have a further discussion once we do bring up the different options that were addressed here at RDC and as we move forward in talking with our chapters. The other portion that I did hear is in regards to the reporting. So I do want to also make a request to ASC that there should be a reporting form. So when chapters do have a cap, then where is their checkoff list for those chapters? So that should be included, that template should be drafted so that every month, there's that monthly reconciliation. But there's also a checklist for chapters to use so that they can get themselves out of cap. To me, that's the technical assistance. And so that form does need to be developed so that chapters don't stay in cap or they don't stay in sanction for five or ten years, however long they're sitting in, in that. And then in a sense too, I think, you know, part of that audit does need to be administrative and not necessarily come before the committee. So if we can go ahead and revisit that as well and have a further discussion with Ms. Janine Jones, our Auditor General, those are just be my final recommendations. So thank you, Madam Chair. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Honorable Claw, for those recommendations. And I do have that noted. That will definitely be a part of our discussions when we're talking about the, I guess, finalization of the Title twenty-six amendments. That would have to go before council when we choose to drop a cleaner model. So with that, I do have the meeting with Auditor General as well that I have noted here. And any other colleagues with questions? Honorable Vice Chair Johnson?
Charlie, the community service coordinator, is there any type of reporting mechanism that is required to be submitted to the ASC office? Their roles and responsibility, things that they've done? You know, like how many, you know, support was provided to the community? Let's say assisting families out there with home sales with all this funding, ARCA funding, like renovation or, you know, these chapter projects. You know, there's with our other building, like how, how are they maximizing their time while they're in the office? You know, getting out there and being very, reaching out to the communities? And then my second question, these PEP and carpenters and operators, have you put them operators? Is there a report provided back to ASC regarding what they're doing? You know, because I know a lot of chapters, you know, they have a lot of funding for renovation or some type of, you know, request at the chapter. And I see that there's carpenters that are on payroll, are these PEP, like is there, you know, what are, what are they doing? You know, do you get that information? What, what, what report can we get from them, you know?
Good question. Thank you for those questions, Vice Chair. So, Mr. Charlie, I'll go ahead and you'll turn back over to you for a response. And I don't know if you just want to also make a response to Honorable Claw. Thank you.
Alrighty, so thank you once again, Honorable Claw, Honorable Johnson. And so Honorable Claw, recognition on the chapter checklist development. That is on our, on our radar for this this year. We're trying to make a document to where it would be more of an individual chapter basis. We're not trying to make it to one hundred percent uniform, but at least in terms of work to fit it to each chapter. Their unique cap situation. So that is being, that is on our radar this this year to develop one. Honorable Johnson, for the CSC reporting. Right now, I do not know of a reporting mechanism that we have, at least monthly. I would expect that the CSC would be providing a monthly report to the, their officials, who wants to their ASC. I'll have to check to see if they do that. As for the PEP workers, they are under the supervision of the CSC. So I would expect those, any type of operations or whatever they're doing, which should be included, that CSC reporting in terms of for PEP workers. So I'll get back on that one. But thank you.
So, Mr. Charlie, on Vice Chair Johnson's question for PEP, I know that the coordinator or even the chapter manager has to do what they call a PEP project application even before they're hired, when their position is going to be advertised. And in, in that particular application, it indicates what are they going to be doing within the time that they're going to be hired? So I don't know if you want to share that with Vice Chair?
Okay, so yeah, so when they're, the chapter is developing a PEP position, they're supposed to develop the budget for it, make sure they had the funds set aside, as well as the proposal plan or a plan for pretty much what is that employee going to be doing? And for what timeframe, for how much, all the, all the details are put into it. So and that's how they get the funds that should be approved through the chapter for that, with that PEP project application. And then from there, they'll go through the process of either hiring, interviewing, and then hiring at the chapter level. But I can review those PEP, they should be completing what's on their application form. And that's where the chapter should be building on. When they approve PEP hours, it should be improvement on, based on those applications that they originally make, planned for. But I can definitely find out. But as of right now, I don't have, I don't really receive what the PEPs do. But the CSC should be following that they're the supervisor.
That clarify your question, Vice Chair?
So, so do you receive those? The CSC?
I know it. No, I do not.
Thank you for those questions, Honorable Vice Chair Johnson. So with that, I believe that we've been on this for a good significant time. And again, like I had stated, we still have yet, you know, a lot that needs to be talked about to properly refine the Title twenty-six amendment. So, but in the interim, what can we make as an amendment to give a lot of clarity to chapters? And again, I think one of them that Chair Ness had brought up is identify if, which prob, you know, in terms of legality, you know, do we need a chapter resolution as to who's going to be supervising, you know, the CSC? And for non-certified chapters, but certified chapters is different. So with all these outstanding issues, what I'll do is just breaking this down to an email and see when we can schedule another meeting, maybe off record just to have this internal discussion with amendments and whatnot. So again, there were some notes that I've taken where recommendations were given by colleagues. And those are noted here and we can go ahead and go forward from there and schedule these meetings. And we'll keep you informed of that, okay? So with that, colleagues, I do have a motion by Honorable Chair Ness and a second by Honorable Vice Chair Johnson for the report here from Administrative Services Center Department Manager. So with that, colleagues, if no more questions, going once, going twice, like to go ahead and take this report to a rule called the Honorable Vice Chair Johnson. How do you vote?
Vice Chair Jason Johnson, it's great.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Claw. How do you vote?
I vote green.
Thank you, Honorable Chair Ness. How do you vote?
I'll go recognize vote green.
Thank you, Honorable Chair Simpson. There's excuse, honorable Otto So is excused. So with that, we have three favors, there are opposing, chair not voting. So motion carries on this report and thank you. So if you can just provide the outstanding reports. One of them is emailing the org chart to RDC. And then the other area is in regards to updated information on the audit. But I think we got that from Ms. Jones. And then also the emergency response plan and then the CIP, eight eight, yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Yes, you too, as well. You have a good day and a good productive work week, Mr. Charlie. And thank you to you and your team. I know it's a lot of work. I'll go ahead on to item letter B of the report. US EPA grants underground injection control program, one point nine million dollar update. We do have presenter, Ms. Yolanda Barney. Who was the Director of the Surface and Groundwater Protection Department with Navajo Nation EPA. We also have Mr. Director Stephenette City for Navajo Nation EPA. So I believe they are here. And colleagues, I just want to make it known that we have Honorable Vince James, Chair Vince James here. Although I sent a tech, or yeah, a text here that he requests is if we can put his legislation two fourteen dash two four back on the agenda in case anyone wants to. We would have to suspend four rules and put his legislation back on the agenda. So can I have Mr. Chair James?
Question.
Honorable Claw?
Can we get clarification from our legislative attorney before Sir James makes himself comfortable? There was a note about two thirds vote, so if we could get clarification.
Okay, Mariana. She stepped out. Okay, let's take a five minutes, five minutes of recess, colleagues. She just had stepped out. She probably went to go upstairs, get some exercise and five minutes. She said, will we convene at one oh six? And we'll ask her the question that Honorable Claw in regards to
No, she was saying that to add it to, to add it back to our agenda, we needed two thirds vote, but we don't have two thirds right here.
Sorry, we just forgot that one.
Sorry, we just got that one.
To get this legislation approved for expenditure for Jedito Chapter. So, uh, she need, um, that proposal, both say, Honorable Vice Chair Johnson? Okay, we got a clarification, so we don't need to. Should I, Mr.?
Well, just, yeah, just since we're still on our little break.
Uh, Mariana, there was a question on the floor here.
I'd like to, uh, make a motion to amend the agenda to add legislation number zero two one four dash two five. And let's go ahead and take action prior to. P or EPA report.
Pushing. So colleagues, I do have a motion by Honorable Vice Chair Johnson to amend the agenda to add legislation two fourteen to five and take action before we receive a report from Navajo Nation EPA, colleagues. May I get a second? May I get a second? Uh, Honorable Chair Nez, thank you. So with that, uh, colleagues, do we have any questions going once? Uh, Honorable Claude?
Yes.
You have questions? Okay, so it's going to be twenty-minute presentation then.
It's shorter than that, it's okay.
Okay, so, um, but I need to take a roll call vote on this amending the agenda. But you have questions on the actual legislation, is that what you're saying? Pushing. So let's go ahead and take it to roll call vote and amending the agenda. I have a motion and a second. Um, Honorable Vice Chair Johnson, how do you vote?
Vice Chair Jason Johnson, it's great.
Thank you. Honorable Claude, how do you vote?
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Chair Nez?
I'll go recognize, vote green.
Thank you. Honorable Chair Simpson is excused, and Honorable Otto So is excused. So with that, we have three favors or opposing turnout voting on amending the agenda to re, or to add legislation two fourteen dash two four to take action on this legislation before we hear the report from Navajo Nation EPA. So with that, um, we'll go ahead and yield time over to Honorable James then. And yes, we'll read the legislation into the record on the spot.
Okay, thank you, uh, Resources and Development Committee, this is your, um, legislation two one four dash twenty-five that we have added to the agenda. Resources and Development Committee has final authority on this. It's a proposed standing committee resolution, twenty-fifth Navajo Nation Council, third year twenty twenty-five, sponsored by Vince James. Prime sponsor of tracking number zero two one four dash twenty-five, an action relating to the Resources and Development Committee approving project cost savings of twenty-eight thousand two hundred and seventy dollars from Jedito Chapter projects approved in resolution cap thirty-five eighteen for additional chapter projects, Jedito chapter projects.
Okay, so with that, may I get a motion, colleagues, on legislation two one four two five? Honorable Vice Chair Johnson, and second by Honorable Chair Nez. So with that, uh, we do have question here by Honorable Claude. So with that, I'd like to go ahead and take it to the sponsor, Honorable Chair James, with a twenty-minute presentation on legislation two fourteen to five.
Okay, I have, uh, none of your vision, although none of the Resources Development Committee did, um, see us in project with under resolution CAP dash thirty-five dash eighteen. It are, um, based on the on it for bathroom additions. Of all that, see some project has been, um, completed. And Jedito has completed the bathroom additions, and with that, there's a balance out of that dollar. Seventeen hundred and twenty-six thousand two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and sixty-seven, a costing of twenty-eight thousand two hundred and seventy dollars. Um, and we're currently requesting for that cost saving to be changed each to a new project name, um, and transferring the twenty-eight thousand, uh, two hundred and seventy dollars um, to Jedito, uh, Chapter House renovation as a new project. And so it gave, uh, which, uh, be a, a, been questioned, that will complete my, um, report and the legislation that is before you, thank you.
For pushing, yeah, thank you, um, Honorable, uh, James for your report and giving clarity to the committee on two fourteen to five legislation. Honorable Claude?
Yes, uh, thank you, Madam Chair, Otto, yeah, Chanelle, for bringing your legislation forward. Um, I do have questions as to the process of how you determine that there is a need for chapter renovation. So I do not see a chapter resolution in place or any documents from the chapter itself. And so for RDC, uh, we have been very thorough in ensuring that all documentation is in place. And so that's what I'm seeing here, and I, you know, I am concerned that, to me, it does not seem like there was a chapter consultation. However, I could be wrong. And in addition to that, um, you know, for the council, we're always talking about how revenues are also decreasing. And in years past, I think this was an acceptable pro- process, which was to use any of the remaining funds for other construction-ready projects. But when it comes to funding, I do not see it within the full authority of RDC to reserve any excess funds. So my question would be to our Legislative Council is to see if that is a correct process. Um, and, you know, I think this is going to be a trend for all chapters is that if they have already expended funds that were given to them uh, in order to complete projects, and then they have a savings left over. I think chapters are going to, um, use this route. But in order to get an actual projection of Navajo Nation dollars, then this just seems like a way of, you know, people reserving some of the funds when it, that could have been taken into account of our base planning amount. So those are some of my questions, and I'll turn the time back over to you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that, Honorable Claude. First, let me go ahead and yield time over to our legal counsel, Ms. Mariana Khan, in regards to the question, uh, with the C H S N monies and um, if you've got the question from Honorable Claude. Mariana?
In regard to, um, citizen money that has been allocated and with this resolution, this, um, legislation to approve, uh, project cost savings for additional, uh, chapter projects, the resolution of the Council, CAP dash thirty-five dash eighteen approved in twenty eighteen with regard to expenditure of citizen funds, provides that section four of that resolution, section four. Section four. B three. It says, with the approval of the Resources and Development Committee, any project cost saved or reduced or reduced through leveraging or otherwise shall be available for expenditure on any other project within the respective chapter named Construction Ready by CPMD. If there are no construction-ready projects within the respective chapter, then with the approval of the Resources and Development Committee, the saved or reduced cost shall be available for expenditure on any other project in the respective district. And that is the language that gives the authority for the use of the, those, um, project cost savings. And the requirement is that the, um, that in this case, the, um, the identification through, um, CPMD. And we have this exhibit eight in this particular legislation, a memorandum from Leonard Hardy of the Capital Projects Management Department, CPMD, with regard to a change notice. And in this particular exhibit A, it states that the at the bottom of that memo, it says at the, um, the middle of the memo, the change, the change request is to utilize cost savings to renovate or repair the Jedito Chapter House. And it gives one and two, um, the various business unit numbers. And with the two bathroom additions projects completed, and the cost savings from both projects can be helpful to provide repairs with the citizen change notice. The chapter will be able to provide the needed repairs to the existing facility. It would appear that the, um, uh, cap thirty-five dash eighteen provides for the use of the, of the, um, the funds to be used in this particular manner as identified by the, the memos exhibit A. I do not see a requirement in this particular cap thirty-five dash eighteen that says it is to be accompanied by a chapter resolution, and there is none attached to this particular, um, legislation. Madam Chair.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification, Mariana. So again, to Honorable Claude, your question, um, it does state in the enabling, uh, C H S N legislation that this committee does have that authority. In such circumstances, there is shortfall or unexpended dollars on the prior obligated C H S N dollars. But in this case, um, what does she, um, Honorable, uh, James, in regards to the chapter resolution that was requested? Um, I don't know if the chapter, Jedito chapter in this case had a previous resolutions to re, um, appropriate dollars to the stated, um, project initiatives with the unexpended dollars?
Uh, none, I can't, uh, in regards to the question, um, the chapter, um, did make the, um, request to transfer this funding, and it's been required sometimes under my, uh, eight point eight million ARPA. We did also set aside two hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the Jedito Chapter housing renovation. Um, and at, at the time, when I D I Q was doing their visits to those projects, it was projected at that time that was a shortfall project, and more funding was needed at that time. Um, so based off that, again, uh, Jedito, uh, decided to transfer some of this money, money over to the Jedito our chapter housing renovation. Um, so we've been at it for, for quite some times, um. But now, since the money has been reverted to our, the triple R, um, uh, again, with working with Leonard, uh, Hardy from DCD, uh, with his letter attachment here, um, under exhibit eight. Um, that's how we've been trying to move forward, getting that chapter renovation completed there at Jedito. And Jedito is in a unique situation because they're an island and surrounded by hopy land. Um, and, and so they've been trying to really try and get their, um, central location of the community, um, up to power and, uh, updated, but at this point in time hasn't really worked in their favor because of funding wise. Um, so it gave, and we're just waiting for funding, uh, to move forward with this project. So, uh, yeah, but honestly, thank you.
So Chair James, chapter resolution, yeah, approved with the need for this, um, specific amount.
There, we have a couple of them, but within, within the chapter, this legislation.
How was she, um, Honorable Claude? Do you have, uh, did that clarify, or do you have a follow-up?
I have follow-up questions.
Pushing, go ahead, we'll turn back over to you.
Thank you for the response. Um, so the reason I bring that up is, again, all Navajo Nation dollars are subject to audit. And so even with CPMD, they should have a review system of how they deem a tractor projects as project ready. And so even with that, we as RDC, we know that CPMD has a checklist. And I don't see that checklist, um, attached here. Although there is a memo from Mr. Leonard Hardy. Uh, normally, that would have been a breakdown on supplies, and then also contingency costs. And then also just, you know, what type of work would be included. And for myself, I am a little hesitant to approve it, since that is a significant dollar amount of twenty-eight thousand two hundred and seventy dollars when there is no documentation in place, and there's no tractor resolution in place as well. And so this did go through the five-day comment period. And, uh, this was entered on September fifth, we're now on September twenty-second. I think the chapter had significant amount of time to submit a chapter resolution. They probably had a chapter meeting this month, but I don't see that. So to me, um, I still think of this as incomplete. And so that would just be my comments for this legislation. Thank you. And so that would just be my comments for this legislation. Thank you.
Again, Shaha, thank you, uh, honorable claw for stating those concerns in regard to legislation two fourteen, two five. And um, since this um, was stated by honorable James that it's been in queue with a shortfall. And um, I don't know if um, uh, Chair James, he would be, you know, um. Uh, in regards to supporting documentation, I know that is one of the key, key areas and. We just want to be able to make sure that all the um, the boxes have been checked off and these types of um, transfer requests. So um, with that, um, there are those concerns that by one colleague of the committee, so just, you know, wanted you to note that. And um, going forward, so again, it will just come down to the uh, to the voting on this legislation. Uh, any other colleagues with any questions at this time? Going once, oh, um, Mariana?
Madam Chair, membership of resources and development committee, re, um, the council's resolution, cap thirty-five dash eighteen. Provides for two instances um, for the savings cost, project cost savings to be used. And one is for deemed construction ready by C P M D, those types of projects. And then the second is if there are no construction ready projects within the respective chapter. Then with the approval of the resources and development committee, the saved or reduced cost shall be available. For expenditure on any other project within the respective district. Um, and I'm sure that there seem to be um, uh, non-construction ready projects that are. Uh, are available or any other project within the respective district that does seem to be. Uh, available for, for other non-construction ready projects. Um, and it just seems to offer a broad range that's available. Um, that the funds can be used on. And again, there, um, I see no, no um, language that says that. That the um, chapter resolutions can also accompany a request. I'm quickly looking at other situations in which, um, your colleagues from other, other delegates have requested use of, of the. Of money in this way and not all of them have chapter resolutions that have been approved through the resources.
Thank you for that, um, Mariana, uh, going back to honorable claw.
So, uh, thank you, and I'm gonna go ahead and respond to what our legislative council mentioned. So in that page one of two, section C, it does say, yes, if there are no construction ready projects. Within the respective chapter. But in this case, uh, the letter here indicates that they are in need of. Of their renovation, which means that C P M D would have had to determine. That this was construction ready. So where is their checklist? And that is the question. And yes, it does say that. With the approval of the resource and development committee, the saved or reduced cost shall be available for expenditure. On any other project within, within the respective district. So that's a whole nother saying, so would it, um, the way I'm interpreting that is. Okay, so then that would go to any other chapter within that district or any other project within that district. Um, but in this case, we're not talking about any other project, we're talking about the chapter. So in there, my interpretation is it has to be construction ready. Therefore, I'm asking for the checklist on how C P M D deemed it construction ready for renovation. So that's just where I needed the clarification. Thank you.
Shaha, thank you, um, honorable claw. So under that saying, before I yield it over to Chair Nez, um, under that, that same legislation, page one of two. Under letter C, it states that if there are no construction ready projects. Within the respective chapter, then with approval of the resources and development committee. The saved or reduced costs shall be available for expenditure on any other project within the perspective.
Yeah, it was mandatory to.
Within the prospective district. So that's, that's what it states too. So we'll go ahead and um, go back to Ms. Khan.
So we're saying if it's not project ready, then we have to give it to some other project in the district. So we have to say it's project ready and that's why it needs a checklist. That's what I'm saying.
Okay, um, I'll go ahead and yield time over to Peggy because she just showed me um, some. Uh, checks on the uh, on the C H S N, but let me go ahead and yield time over to Chair Nez first. Go ahead.
She might enter.
Okay, so um, Peggy, do you wanna read what you shared with me?
Okay.
Since she's coming from budget finance.
This is uh, for uh. The uh, citizen projects, what, what uh, we did one time was we did a presentation. On cap thirty-five eighteen, that was um, if, I don't know if your committee. Has seen cap thirty-five eighteen, I was trying to see if I could find it in my files, I think it's. It's not there anymore anyway.
That's here.
You needed to, okay, I, I can show you. In that resolution, it does have exhibits in it. So A, at the end, there was a exhibit. And it goes through A through D, I believe it was, and it has a listing. And it has all the chapters and their projects that they had uh, in there. And so what had to happen was the, there's a form that C P M D has. And Shauna's referring to it, I believe that it's, it's a form that, that, it's not on my exhibits.
Just reading.
But it says, uh, the step one, when there's a change to, to those exhibits, any of those exhibits. Uh, where the money is sitting, they can change that and C P M D has a change form. That change form, Mickey, it's not attached to this, but there's a memo there. And it says step one, the delegate signs the form before it's provided to C P M D. Uh, for project proposals checkoff list to include information whether it's construction ready.
Yeah.
Then the second step is the project change form is signed by the respective delegate and given to C P M D for certification. So that's where C P M D has to sign that form and it's just a simple form that O L C developed. This was under, when Dana Bobrov was the legislative council.
That's right.
So that was the process. It didn't require, as I remember, to make it so that the funds could just hit the street. And the chapters could expand it.
Right.
We didn't require a resolution, a chapter resolution wasn't necessary, just that form. Signed by the delegate and C P M D, C P M D would have to look in that. Um, there was exhibits to make sure that those funds weren't extended. And then they had to, they were supposed to update those exhibits all the time to show where um. Those changes were made to those exhibits and um. After, when the, when this twenty-fifth council came in, the B N F kind of like. Didn't go back to those updates. So I don't know where they're at today on that. With C P M D, but twenty-fourth, twenty-third, twenty-second, A, A, they, they kept those uh. They, they kept uh, meetings, B N F kept having meetings where C P M D had to come in and report to them. You know, if there was changes and that's what they checked on was just to make sure that those forms were there. And sometimes uh, legislations would come in and they would just have a forum there. But it would only have one signature, no signature from C P M D. They would just have to update that and amend the legislation according to that. So that's, that's just kinda giving you in a nutshell what, what had to happen. And so Mariana has that form on her, her laptop, I saw one that was a sample on there or. That's, that's usually been the process, but I don't know how Kristen uh, skipped that process or if it's changed. The processing, so it's uh, that's, Mariana?
Madam Chair, um, as has been noted, my colleague, colleague, um, um. Kristen Lowell is the one who, who was memo is here saying it is legally sufficient. The particular exhibit A. From my reading of exhibit A, which is in um, sentence form, is. Contains what essentially is the information that is provided in the. Citizen project amendment certification form that I have found in a previous resolution. It provides um, the cost, the cost savings and what year. It is to be moved from in both projects, um, these um. And it provides the exhibit and project number and the current exhibit. Exhibit A has D, D dash one, three, zero. And that's the same format, the numbering system that is in the form, citizen project amendment certification. And it does give the business unit number in, in the legislation's exhibit A. I am just seeing if you're, the exhibit A that is attached to this conversation provides the same information that is on that form. And from what I can see, it does. And the signature um, from the capital projects management department is on exhibit A. So, um, it seems to have been reviewed by the same individual, title, some. Individual, C P M D individual that would have approved what was on the. Um, citizen project amendment certification form. That I'm reviewing comparing, making comparisons. I, I personally do not know why that particular form was not used, but um. If it seems to have the same information as us is on exhibit A. There's two projects that are listed here and on the, on the citizen project amendment certification. From a previous legislation that was approved by this committee, there. There is this similar information, Madam Chair.
Kodo Shi?
Provided at this time, I mean, I do not know why that particular form is not used. And why C P M D chose to do this long form as opposed to their.
Checklist.
Their, their form here that is attached to the previous legislation. I don't, I don't know.
Kodo Shi? Shaha, thank you for that clarification, Mariana, and also to Peggy, Chair Nez, did that uh. Are you still in, okay, I'll go ahead and allow you time.
Okay, um, thank you, Madam Chair, committee members, uh, Chair James. And I, I'm just, um, after reviewing the legislation and attachment, exhibit A, I. Here's a memorandum dated August thirteenth, this was just um, a couple months ago. By Leonard Hardy from C P M D. The subject is in reference to this, C H S N change notice. So to me, this would suffice. If I would read down to number two halfway, it says. The cost savings exists in the amount of fourteen thousand, one hundred thirty-four dollars, thirty-four cents. Then it says, change to delete the former project name, bathroom addition, upper highland with new project name. Jedito chapter house renovation and transfer the cost saving in a matter of fourteen thousand Navacar. So I, I would think that this would be sufficient since our legal. Council. Kristen Lowell declared this legally sufficient, no? To me, this would suffice to, it, it's really just twenty-eight thousand Navacar with all the cost of everything. You know, um, there, there's not much to renovate with twenty-eight thousand. In so long, just case, although, you know, we, we do have final authority for this and. I would just go ahead and move forth with this, um, since it has exhibit A. As citizen change notice, no, I think, so that's what I would go with, Madam Chair, thank you.
Kodo Shi, Shaha, thank you for that, uh, Chair Nez, in regards to legislation two fourteen, two five. So again, with the clarification that was given by, uh, Mariana and. C P M D, um, through this uh, individual, Mr. Leonard Hardy should have provided the proper documentation. But if you read the context of this particular memorandum, it does state on year two and three. How much monies was unexpended in the final paragraphs as to go into um, repairs of the existing facility. So again, um, I just wanted to make that clarification, I know honorable claw, you have a follow up.
So, um, my follow up will be that I just wanna make, um, it known on the record that our legislative council. Will be setting precedence, um, for this committee by stating that a memorandum will suffice for a form. And I want to make that known because after today, you are setting precedence for other capital projects management. Uh, projects that will be amended. And so if that's going to be the new precedence, then maybe you just need to eliminate the form. So that would be the task of the committee since we're, we're, we're accepting a memo instead of the form. That was already approved by the committee. So that will be my final comments. Thank you.
Shaha, thank you, um, honorable claw. And again, um, this would um, be an action that, um. Eventually, we would have to, I know, modify the like, enabling legislation of cap thirty-five eighteen. But it clearly states in there, but I think this is an area that, um, capital project management department supposed to properly. Consult and um, guide, you know, delegates and not just delegates, but chapter officials on how to properly fill out these forms. So again, um, uh, honorable, uh, Chair James, Oneen Shkage, and Antoni Kodo. Um, will take action on this legislation here today, but if you could just. Go back over to Mr. Leonard Hardy, who's project manager, I'm assuming for Jedito chapter. To fill out that proper um, checklist form, cause I know that there is a form. Cause I had to do that for Rock Springs chapter and then Seth was our delegate, so we had to fill out that form. And we even had, just to be on the safe side, we did a chapter resolution. Auto A, Arda, maybe, John, he dropped a resolution. So if you can just, um, get those forms and, you know, um. Attach it to the legislation so that everything is gonna be consistent, cause I know that you've been wanting to get this legislation. So that the chapter can utilize it for the intended purpose of um, shortfall of chapter renovation. So I take, I get, so I'll go ahead and yield time back over to you, Chair James.
Okay, Anna, thank you, uh, for that, um, I, I know what form you guys are coming. Do that form, we did complete that form, but this is what, um, legal council inserted in this legislation. So it does have all of that information. Um, I'm trying, I thought I had it, but I, I know I was giving that packet back, uh, this was a thicker packet. And then, uh, when I picked up my legislation, this legislation to drop it, it was returned back to me. Um, so this is what, I, I was. Um, so this is what, I, I was informed of, of exhibit A is, is, is what was needed in within the legislation. So we do already have that form that Peggy was talking about, that was generated quite some times back. Um, but of course, uh, I believe that was to administration back ago. Um, so that's something that's probably outdated because we, we as a council had to change that law as well at the process. And then so going back to the comment of the chapter now, is the chapter aware or have you consulted with the chapter? Again, that information is on exhibit A in, in the first paragraph. Based off the chapter, um, uh, CSC and, you know, president visiting with Mr. Leonard Hardy. Uh, and, and that was based on that, they met on May fifteenth. Um, and, and so things happened between the chapter and Leonard Hardy to have Mr. Hardy generate this on August thirteenth. And then once this letter was um, drafted and all of those forms were correctly filled out, I did submit it and based on that, this legislation was ready for pickup and completed on August twenty-ninth. Um, so, and then eventually it happened, you had to have it go through the process again. And this legislation, finally, we had it posting on September fifth of, of this month. Um, so a, as you can see, the timeframe of when we started on this legislation, consulting with the chapter and then the chapter consulting with Capital Project Management Department, Mr. Leonard Hardy, we, we come to this point. Um, and, and so I kindly request for your support and favor. Um, a, again, we are doing what we can to, to serve our, now the people out in Jedito. Um, and a lot of my Jedito constituents there are, majority of them are HPI, Hopi Partitioned Land. And so a lot of constituents in Jedito that still reside on Hopi land, they still don't have the opportunities as a delegates have where they have infrastructure and water line, power lines. They, they don't have that accessibility that we have as delegates or any other natural individuals, families that are out there that have that access to infrastructures. They, uh, we have to work with Hopi transportation to even pass them kindly to, to do grading on their dirt road. Um, so those are the kinds of people that I, that I deal with and come to the chapter um, for support. Um, and, and then of course, we have some relocates that have settled in Jedito within the boundaries to where they're not too far from where their looking port was put into the ground. Um, so we have those families that are relocated in Jedito as well. So overall, mentally, physically, they've been impacted tremendously. Some of them, um, the nearly second generation, third generation, don't, don't even have legs to go back to. Uh, and, and, and it's been very difficult for individuals in Jedito to move forward and try to overcome um, a lot of the man dispute consequences that they, they had to pay for. Um, so of course, you guys know that they don't even have life stops in Jedito as well. So they can't do any of that. So they, they're really looking forward to um, wanting some central location to where they can report to, um, to have their elders or elders do things, our disability, disabled members to do things within the central um, part of Jedito. So that's why their attention has been very um, important to them to get a brand new Jedito chapter and then to expand the, the Jedito. Um, chapter with HVAC system and so forth, but they don't have all that opportunity at this point. Um, so other than that, like I stated earlier, they're part of eight point eight million. Um, and, and they have two hundred and sixty thousand on that side with our, our money as well. And then plus they also have some other doc, uh, other fundings that they save within their own budget with their carryover budget that they've been receiving to do their best to renovate the chapter there. So just wanted to mention that and just kindly ask for your support. Thank you.
Good question. Uh, thank you for that, Chair James. So Peggy, if you can please reach out to um, CPMD because of the enabling legislation of CAP thirty-five eighteen. CPMD and INTU are supposed to present an annual leveraging report to this committee and BNF during the first quarter of each Navajo Nation fiscal, you're identifying the efforts and the success of chapters. We want to know how much monies um, have been expended for these projects that were identified in this particular enabling legislation and how many are still sitting there. So if we can just get that in writing, email to this committee, that would be great. And we can definitely share with Budget and Finance Committee as well. Chair James, if you can just kindly share that with the committee too as well, that check off this you mentioned. That would, um, you know, provide at least some closure to some of the questions that we had. So with that, colleagues, if no more questions, I'd like to go ahead and take legislation two fourteen dash two five to roll call. Okay, I do have a motion by Honorable Vice Chair Johnson and the second by Chair Nance. So with that, colleagues, Honorable Vice Chair, how do you vote?
Vice Chair, please, Stephen Johnson votes green.
Thank you, Honorable Claw, how do you vote?
I vote green.
Honorable Chair Nance, how do you vote?
The red nurse votes green.
Honorable Chair Simpson is excused and Honorable Otto So is excused. So with that, we have three favors, zero opposed in turn on voting. So motion carries with the acceptance of legislation two fourteen, two five. Yeah, um, Chair James, for coming back and know that you also had a Hess meeting today. Jedito Chapter would allow opportunity for additional costs for the renovation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so going back to item B, under received reports, US EPA Grant Underground Injection Control Program. Funding in the amount of one point nine million. Just to get an update from Director Yolanda Barney with the Surface and Groundwater Protection Department and then also Director at City regarding the Navajo Nation or with Navajo Nation EPA. So we wrote a lot, twenty minutes for your report, colleagues. And I do believe handouts is being given by Ms. Nelson. So. So, uh, and thank you Chair Nance for requesting, you know, this report for this committee here today. So whenever you are ready, and the clock will start ticking at one fifty-three PM. Twenty minutes, colleagues. So I think you have to have that mic right there in front of you so it's not staticky. Go ahead, you may proceed.
Good afternoon. Members of the Resources Development Committee. Uh, members of the Navajo Nation Twenty-Fifth Council. Um, my name is Stephen Bryant at City, Executive Director of Navajo Nation Environmental Protection Agency. Also have a department manager, Mr. Lauda Barney, who is managing our Surface and Groundwater Protection Department. The underground injection control program resides within that department, within our organizational structure. So um, just wanted to introduce Ms. Barney and turn over the rest of the time to her to report on this grant. Um, I will say, on behalf of all of Navajo EPA, that we do a lot of our work under grants from the United States Environmental Protection Agency. Uh, grant amounts of all different varying sizes and length of period. And so this particular grant is one of the larger grants and it is also authorized and has a approved budget and performance period of up to five years. Uh, this grant was awarded towards the latter end of two thousand twenty-four. So we've already been working for about one year on, on this grant. We have four more years to go. At this point in time, I'll turn it over to Ms. Yolanda Barney.
Good afternoon. I'm Iyio Yolanda Barney, and I'm the Director of the Surface and Groundwater Protection Department of Navajo EPA. I've been um, working with the Navajo EPA since nineteen ninety-three, been a while. Um, but I did assume the directorship of the Surface and Groundwater in twenty-two. Um, we were asked by US EPA, and actually all the states were asked by US EPA if they were interested in developing a Class Six program. And so we sent a letter to EPA headquarters and they responded and said that we'll go ahead and work with you on uh, receiving a five-year grant. And so we started that effort last year or this, this past year. And we've been working very hard to find staff. I think I had presented to you all some challenges on staff. And one of the comments that we received was maybe we should go and look into buying staff through contracts. And that was Mr. Okun's recommendation. Um, we had found somebody by contract. But after everything was said and done, his supervisor said, no, you are also going to be under some sort of conflict of interest. So, you know, that, that, those discussions stopped. So we continued to look for a geologist. And so recently, I've been working on reclassifying the position to an associate geologist. So hopefully there's, there's some um, Navajo, young Navajos that have studied in the field of geology. So we're going to look into hiring one of those individuals. In the meanwhile, other components of this particular program include developing regulations, developing program, inventory, um, regulations, policy, everything that we need to have a primacy program. So we're giving this grant for about five years and we want to be able to have that program be awarded from soon. Recently, Arizona was awarded primacy. And so was state of Colorado. So we're looking to them to take a look at how their program was developed so we can develop, develop our program as well. So we do have a set of regulations that I need to put out for public comment. Um, as soon as that goes through, I will be presenting those regulations to the Resources and Development Committee for approval. So um, there's, like I said, a whole bunch of program elements that we still need to get done and we're going to be working on that. Um, my position is the Director, um, but for fiscal year twenty-six, I didn't get that much money. So I had, I put myself into this position, so I will be managing the program forty percent. So I'll be good in terms of salary, anyway. A class six well is one that takes um, air quality pollutants from the air and puts it into solution. And instead of it being out there in the air, it's going to be in water and it's going to be re-injected into a very deep well. And these wells are at least five to seven thousand feet deep. They're not anywhere near the surface. As they travel through and they're injected into these deep wells, the owner and the operator of these deep wells has to make sure that the well casing is not going to be content or not going to be broken and dysfunctional to the point where all the air contaminants are going to go through that well and go to the bottom of the aquifer. So as it travels through, it will not contaminate drinking water sources. And so because of the drinking water source potential contamination, this particular program is cited under the Surface and Groundwater Protection Department. So is the Underground Injection Control Program Class Two. Class Two oversees oil and gas industries and their strip water is injected into deep wells um, at least about five to seven thousand feet deep. So there's quite a few injection wells out there that will be overseen for Class Two. But for Class Six, then it'll be specifically identified for air pollutants. There's no um, coal industry on the Navajo Nation. They'll be shut down. And those, the ones that is still working, I think is APS and, and I think they're going to change how they do business as well. But Trump allowed um, a lot of these states to re-initiate the coal burning power plants and coal mining activities. So we're not sure how far um, those particular industries are, are along in terms of reactivating a lot of the coal and coal mining industry. So as that grows and the potentials like that may happen with divisional natural resources, it's their decision to have coal companies again. In that event then, and if we do have a coal fire power plant, we'll be able to regulate that facility that takes that contaminant. And that's what a Class Six well is. There is an active Class Six well um, at Joseph City close to Winslow, between Winslow and Holbert. And they have an active Class Six well that's region nine overseas, but now region six. Actually, region nine allowed the state of Arizona to have a Class Six program. So they'll be overseeing them um, in, in their activities. As uh, over the years, I heard that the Navajo Generating Station was interested in having a Class Six well. They were working with the Hopi tribe on developing something like that, that never came about. But the potential was there. So we have those particular areas. Um, most of the Class Six or Class Two wells, the oil and gas industries are located in Annapolis in the Greek and the eastern side of Navajo. Um, those are overseen by our program in terms of Class Two. Um, but there's also a potential of having a Class Six. Right now, there are no Class Six wells. There are no industries that are interested in that yet. But we want to be able to be ready to regulate this particular activity for Class Six. So there's a lot of program development that needs to happen. We still need to make sure we have the staff that are capable overseeing the program and doing inspections and um, working to make sure that there's compliance. So um, program elements are being worked on now because we do have that grant. And I've been to keep moving forward and making sure things get done right. So that's what I've been working on over the last year. There's still quite a bit of work to be done. Thank you.
Mr. City?
I'll just wrap up by mentioning that uh, this expected number of wells compared to the number of wells in the Class Two program may seem upfront to be very, very uh, large contract.
may seem upfront to be very, very large contrast. We do have a number of Class Two wells. We do have a staff that currently is supported by EPA grants to do the job of implementing this program that, as Ms. Barney mentioned, we have been operating under primacy delegation for a number of years now. However, I believe that the two types of wells are very different. And having a program that will address the types of constituents that will be injected into a Class Six well are substantially different from the types of fluids from oil and oil and gas produced water. And so it may seem in some regards. You have a desire to compare the two programs right across, do a simple crosswalk. But I believe that the technical nature and the the importance of understanding the distinction between what will be regulated and how it will be regulated and how things will actually go with the inspections. Once these types of wells are developed within the Navajo Nation, how we will do the job of overseeing their performance will be easy to see. And so this is a very important program to develop. And so we just want to be able to answer your questions with the understanding that we've developed over the past several years as to how we're going to regulate these and what our challenges are and some of the things that we are accomplishing today and continue to ask for your support as we continue to develop this program. And to then acquire by requesting another primacy program. So the Navajo Nation has the ability to stand in front of US EPA and do this work here on the Navajo Nation for ourselves and working with our people and the industry that brings on the Navajo Nation. Thank you.
Chad, thank you Director City and also Ms. Barney for your report. Colleagues, may I get a motion? Ms. Johnson, may I get a second? Honorable Clough. And I do have Honorable Clough on cue first. Go ahead, you'll time over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to our presenters here today. I do have several questions. And one of them is that with this grant, it does sound like a good opportunity if we have the positions. So that's the first challenge there. As was mentioned, there are, you know, these engineers that we do not have on the nation. And even if we contract, then it's deemed a conflict of interest from their primary employer. And so it just makes me wonder how long the recruitment would take. And also, you know, I don't know what the grant requirements are as far as funding. And I think that with that being said, you know, I think that's going to be one of the challenges. A second thing that I hope that does not happen, that we've seen happen in years prior is that many departments and divisions have taken grants only to use those to supplement their other staff salaries. So meaning the general funded salaries. And I don't know if that's going to be the case here again, but those are just the trends that I have been seeing as far as external grants. The other portion is that we're talking about Class Two and under the federal regulations, one forty-four, part one forty-four, and then part one forty-five. So we have a differentiation of the state, which is a one forty-five. And I want to know how you'll be conducting your reporting as you have already identified wells in Aneth, Utah. And so I'm very thankful for this grant opportunity. And we did take a visit out to Aneth Chapter and we did hear the concerns of those residents there as far as clean drinking water and also the quality control. Another question I do have is that who will you be working with as far as the wells? So you did mention that the the well casings have to be intact, that there could not be any corrosion and that you don't want any of that to be going into the aquifer. So I don't think that water resources right now is fully stacked. Well, I know they're not fully stacked. So what are your options as far as working with other state entities that could complete those tasks or other engineers? And even that, you would have to do an RFQ to ensure that these people are able to, first of all, meet the compliance and then second of all, meet the qualifications. So those are my concerns there as far as just getting this project complete. In addition to that, you did mention that Class Two specifically is pertaining to oil and gas and that it would be five to seven thousand feet. There was no mention of our coal industry. And I think that we, as already see, we've had several meetings with the Bureau of Indian Affairs and with Delegate Simonson. And there still is a request out on the floor as far as having the water tested out in Dillagene Region. And so the Many Meals Project is still underway there. You all heard the public hearing that occurred. Speaker Curley was there as well and other surrounding chapters. So is there potential for this grant to fulfill the request of the community to get that water quality test completed there? Since that was an extractive industry, then I would think that it would fall under the purview of the Navajo Nation to ensure that our water quality for our residents is also deemed sufficient and safe. And those are the main concerns that we hear as the Oversight Committee. And based on that for coal and industry, if they were to do the water sampling, water quality testing, what class would that be? I didn't hear the class on that specific industry there. But those are just some of the questions that I have so far, Madam Chair, and I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. So appreciate, thank you for that, Honorable Clough. So I'd like to go ahead and yield time back over to the presenters for a response to Honorable Clough's questions.
Thank you for the questions. There are several programs within the Surface and Groundwater Department. One of them is the Drinking Water Program called Public Water Systems Supervision Program. And we have had primacy since the year two thousand. We developed the program to make sure there's inspections are conducted of drinking water sources. So we oversee about one hundred and seventy-one public water systems that are owned and operated by the NTU. We also oversee the Bureau of Indian Affairs Schools, Businesses and Other Schools on the Navajo Nation that provide water to the students, the community. And we make sure that the water quality is consistently tested for over eighty-two contaminants that are listed in the Navajo Safety Drinking Water Act. We do have a database of that data. And anytime anyone is willing or wants some information, they just need to ask. We can provide them information about the water quality. The Aneth area does have drinking water wells that were high in arsenic and manganese. And so we issued what we call an administrative order to the NTU and we required them to install trigger plants. And so they've been working on developing their trigger plants since two thousand thirteen. And they actually started to filter their water and providing that to the community of Aneth. And Monizum Creek actually has some filter plants. They've been doing that for the last five years and the water quality is a heck of a lot better. It doesn't have arsenic, it doesn't have the iron and manganese issues, it's now good water. That program will continue to oversee Aneth and Monizum Creek and all those other systems across Navajo that have higher or elevated contaminants. With regard to sampling and making sure that the water quality is good, we also have a program called the Water Quality and Enquidias Program. They oversee the rivers, lakes and streams across the Navajo Nation. And they provide standards within which is good for that particular what need like farming, rivers to swim in and, you know, water for the cattle, water for the horses. We make sure that that water quality is within those standards. If not, we require the whatever's contaminating that source, we work with those entities to make sure that to address that. We also have the Underground Injection Control Program and they've had primacy since two thousand and eight. They've been overseeing the oil and gas industry, making sure that the water is is not being impacted by that particular industry. When we did have the coal industries on the Navajo Nation, they also had drinking water sources and that Peabody is still providing potting water for the residents in that area. So that water is still being tested routinely. They're going to be required to do that until they totally shut down. The McKinley Mine across here is also doing the same. They need example of their water routinely. So we have data. If you need some data, certainly we can help you with that. With regard to the challenges on vacant positions, I have actually found some individuals that have geology degrees. They just don't have the experience for these positions. So I've been working on reclassifying the positions to lower levels, bringing them on, getting them trained, making sure that they're able to do the job. Then I turned right around and reclassified the positions to higher positions. I've been working on that with these individuals. We're out there consistently advertising these positions. We're meeting with the college-age children across all of the universities. We have consistently let them know that we need people in engineering, we need people in geology and in hydrology. Those are the positions that we're looking at. So we're working with these individuals. In the meanwhile, we are trying to work on doing subcontracting with individuals that have that kind of capability. So it's a win-win actually, and we are working that way. One individual is from Canada. Unfortunately, I think the visa issue is a little bit challenging. So we'll just deal with that as we need to. With regard to using grant to supplement fund funding, I didn't have a choice in mind because I just didn't have enough for my salary. But, you know, I failed to with not coming to you all and saying I need additional funding. Because I knew that this particular grant needed help. I knew that I'll be able to work on all those program elements and get this particular program onboard with everything they need to have a fully functional program. So we don't use these grants in that way. We, if I knew that a particular program is durable, something that we can see, something that we can say the Navajo Nation can do, I'll certainly go forward and apply for that grant. The question on relying on other state programs. We do have memoranda agreements with states. And if we need their assistance, they're certainly able to come out and work with us. But I would really rather work with Navajo authority. I would really rather work with our credentials. We do have staff that are capable. So with that, I will rely on the states if I have to, but I would prefer using our Navajo people for that. There's a bunch of really good engineers, hydrologists and geologists out there. This particular grant will only be used for developing the program for Class Six. And under the Class Six program, they will be doing inspections of these facilities. They will not be used to sample the water. The sampling of water is going to be the responsibility of the entity that is going to be using that Class Six well. So let's say Intech wants to have a Class Six well. They will be responsible for ensuring the integrity of that well or doing inspections and making sure they report to us and also doing any kind of sampling that's required. We will require them to be working on that particular aspect. That's their responsibility. We will make sure that they get that done.
Thank you. Kupushik, thank you for your response on turn S.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Committee members. Aru Kudala, Ms. Barney, Mr. Ed City. A couple of years ago, my chair, I was there. We approved an ORT to Buffalo Thunder. And they were having a yearly meeting called CUSP, C U S P, Carbon Utilization Storage Partnership. And I was there. We, we met with NIMEXCO Tech as a core scientist and other consultants that work with NIMEXCO Tech. Aru Ada, Ben Hithna Hasnake, Carbon Sequestration, Water, Carbon Storage. Back in June, you approved another ORT for me when I went to Salt Lake City. There, I was a part of the panel being questioned. And there were experts there, scientists from all over the, all over the world very much. And I have two people on the call right now who pretty much are energy experts, Steve Gray as well as Matt Eels. We had a meeting on this. One point nine million USPPA granted in Navajo Nation. What is the status of? I didn't even know our Navajo EPA had this grant award. Now this Class Six. Quagate, UIC, I just sent you guys the website. This is the beginning stages of Navajo EPA to give us a report now if they should continue to do this and let us know where they're at if they can't do it. I think they need to hire experts from NIMEXCO Tech. Mr. Ed City, he just needs to push, push this thing forward and make sure that this money is not sucked back. Because the nation has the potential to make good revenue off of this after all of this testing has been done. Carbon sequestration wells, what NIMEXCO Tech as well as Intech. Aquagate, there's an area where there were abandoned wells where they could utilize this and do the testing. And people are willing to offer their time and their expertise in this area. Since June, and finally we have Navajo EPA here before us. And it is And it is very important. It explains what, what it does. And the start date was a year ago, October twenty twenty four. We had done, there's nothing. The end date is in four more years, September thirty, twenty twenty nine. And I, I'm just very concerned that we're really not understanding this carbon sequestration. Class six injection wells permit program. And I think this is something, Chair, I don't want to waste anybody's time. And I think Mr. Ed City's team needs to do further research. And even invite Steve Gray as well as Matt Eels to come and have a leadership meeting as a committee as well. Because this is the talk throughout, so just wanted to let you know, I know you all have places to go and that's. I just want to bring this up, I don't have any questions for them. So let's just schedule a leadership meeting and invite these experts, thank you.
Kupushik, thank you for uh, those comments on Ternes and bringing this before this committee. And, and added our request to that is what is the expenditure to date? Because it's almost been a year. So if we can be provided that as well and just even via through an email, that would be great. So um, as recommended, um, carbon sequestration is something new, I believe, and it takes intense. Research, not only that, you know, the experts that um, know about this um, industry. And I'll go ahead and recognize Chair Nez's request for a leadership meeting with nomination EPA. Steve Gray and Matt Gill. So Chair, if you have Matt's email address, can you share that with Peggy? So that we can send out a formal request for a leadership meeting.
Okay.
So with that, um, with comment that was made, um, do you have any response, uh, Director City or Mrs. Barney?
I know that with the oil and gas industry, it's a big issue. And I know we have a lot of those operations on Indian allotment land in eastern. Because per year grant, you said that within the um, boundaries of Navajo Nation land. And would Indian allotment be also subject, you know, to have Navajo Nation EPA? And not to mention, you know, a lot of these oil and gas companies, they just want to extract more of that product. And what do they do? They start doing fracking if it's from a private land sideways, and that's also another issue. So I know that uh, some of those, those are some of the concerns that have been expressed by constituents in the eastern Navajo region. So, um, Ms. Barney?
Thank you, Mr. Nez, thank you for writing those comments. And yeah, we can definitely have a leadership meeting sometime soon. And certainly we can hear what these expertise have to um. Help out with in terms of providing guidance and so on. Um, this particular grant is going to be one where we develop the program. We're not going to be involved in actually um, injecting the carbon or the, the carbon water back into the underground wells. We're going to be having the staff be able to do inspections, we need to do inventory. We need to develop our regulations. So our regulations are in draft, we're going to be getting those and during this month, before the end of the month. We will have a cost, a very large cost in, in terms of um, the lawyers that are helping me develop this particular set of regulations. We just had a real bad time with Office of the Controller of getting that contract established. I believe that contract is finally going to be on the books. It's finally going to be, if we'll be able to invoice or provide our invoices for payment. Um, we'll be able to get that all done. So I'm hoping that the dollar amount in that particular expenditure is going to show up. Um, as far as staffing goes, I do have staff there, but we didn't hire anybody for this. Because I knew that there was a lot of program elements that I could handle um, as a director. Just. Uh, and, and this coming year, I O P forty percent of this program. So that expenditure is going to be there, we'll be able to see a little bit um, in terms of spending. Um, right now I believe there's two percent spending. I was supposed to get some computers with that, I don't know where they are, we're still waiting. I, I don't know what the status of this, I'll certainly ask my support team. But um, we'll be able to show that as an expense as well. So we are working on this, we are actively working on trying to develop the program. It just takes time and it takes time to find the staffing. It does, it really does. And, and I, and I did find someone, I just need to make sure that that someone comes onboard. And is trained like how we want them to be trained. So those things do take time.
Thank you, Ms. Barney. I'd sort of follow up, um, again, we're at the last few days of this current fiscal year. And this contract that's been um, slow in getting through, um, we hope that it will get encumbered. Um, the contract is a multi-program vehicle. So um, the work that our legal um, contractor or contract attorney has been doing on this program. Will get paid out of that contract, we're hoping that will be reflected in our year end. Um, and so the two percent expenditure at this point in time, uh, we hope that that will be going up, showing the work that was done this year. Um, but there's still a lot more that needs to get done. Uh, and as Ms. Barney mentioned, hiring staff and, and continuing to develop capacity and to develop this program. I, I'd just like to make one comparison contrast, uh, going back in time. When we achieved primacy for the class two program. It was in reaction to an industry that had already been established on the nation. We, we've had oil exploration and oil development and all other associated industry activities regarding oil extraction. It's why the Navajo Nation Council was created, right? So a hundred years, a hundred years. Um, so, so our reaction to all of that was in, in the nineties to finally get um. Primacy over this program and, and to deal with the class two wells. Um, the way I look at what we're trying to do now is to get in front of what we expect to be happening with the development of. These other types of underground injection wells, which will be for the purpose of sequestering. Uh, primarily carbon dioxide gas in a liquid solution. Um, as Ms. Barney mentioned, there are no current wells uh, that exist right now with that type of class. Um, but with uh, the plans that we have seen and some of the discussion that has gone on with the nation. And the general um, overarching activities off of the Navajo Nation uh, to combat climate change. Uh, carbon sequestration is, is a big part of uh, many of our neighbors' efforts to, to deal with uh. Carbon dioxide emissions. And so we're hoping to get in front of this issue as best as we can. And to be able to work with those people in industry who would actually be developing class six wells. Uh, as I said earlier, um, it's somewhat challenging to try and. Uh, put a number as to how many wells might be developed on the Navajo Nation. But I, I think it's going to be important to have some capacity in place uh, from the very beginning. So that we're not doing um, as, as big a job of reacting to what's taking place. Um, as we had to do in terms of getting control of the class two program that we did and to uh. Maintain it as we're maintaining it now. Um, so with that, members of the Resources and Development Committee, stand for more questions if there are any? Thank you.
Kupushik, Arnold Claw?
Uh, yes. So I want to say thank you for the recommendation for the leadership meeting. And that would be regarding what Mr. City mentioned, and that is on page one. Um, in your report, it just says the carbon sequestration projects that are the subject of this grant are likely to take place near Four Corners Power Plant. So I believe um, as you mentioned, that would be a topic of discussion. But um, I would like a response, if possible, in writing back to the committee. And I know that we are pressed for time here, so. Um, I like more information on how you plan to complete your public benefits on page three. Which says, improving the data management of public class six U I C data. And so how would you capture that? And you've talked about your outside counsel. And then also talking about how you're trying to meet the deadline for the end of this fiscal year. But there was no mention of software. Um, so if you have existing software that captures data, then which software are you using? And how is that information shared with the tractors that are impacted uh, by this study? And then also, I think it's very important because we've had a high outcry from the public. Regarding the health and safety of their communities. And so what public awareness or campaign will be launched through this grant? So that they have a better understanding of our class six U I C activities. And so other things um, that might come up is. In the past, you've had public forums regarding uranium transport and abandoned uranium mines. And so that's what our public is expecting again. And I don't know if there's any date set forward for that. Um, I know that you are again closing out this fiscal year. But that would just be one of the recommendations that I would like to see. So if you have a calendar that you can forward to our committee so that we can go ahead and put that down. And try to be a part of that discussion as we did in the past. So those would be my recommendations for that as well. And then uh, with the recent event that happened in Aneth. Um, of course, we had the windstorm that touched down there as well as the tornado and the impacts. And you know, one of the things I was thinking about is during our recent visit, we saw those towers that have the flares. And then we also have those big machines and the equipment. And so, you know, I don't know what the impact or the catastrophic event that would have happened if that. You know, tornado hit one of those um, buildings and they're so close to our resident's home. Or even if that um, the tower or even one of the pumping stations there. You know, and I really think that our communities do need to get prepped for climate change. Uh, we are experiencing the flooding. Even that contaminants can wash into, you know, washes and it seeps into the aquifers. And now, you know, from what I've heard again, you're saying that uh, you will not be doing any of that. But you're collecting the data on that. So I would like to see a timeline of when you'll be forwarding that information to the committee. Because I think it's very important for the committee to map out where these wells and the injections do occur. And possible potential sites, as mentioned with the Four Corners. So if we could get that forwarded to the committee um, as well, I know that will take time and that won't necessarily be something that you could present to us today. But I'll, I'll go ahead and end with those comments and recommendations and I'll turn it back over to you, Madam Chair, thank you.
Kupushik, uh, thank you for that request, Arnold Claw. So um, Director City, I believe a lot of the um, information that Arnold, Arnold Claw had requested. This is pretty much stated in the purpose of why this grant was awarded to Navajo Nation. And then also the public outreach, I don't know if EPA had to develop plan when they initially submitted this application for this grant. And if you could just um, provide us in terms of timeline, when this particular request would be uh, sent over to the committee. And also in regards to um, the additional information with the Aneth operations and times of natural disasters. You know, what are some of the um, proactive measures that Navajo Nation EPA, you know, provides in terms of education to these companies? That have these types of uh, biz, or these types of industrial developments here on Navajo Nation? So if we can get a timeline, Director City or Ms. Barney, I wonder if we'd be able to get that report? I know because it's um, it encompasses quite a bit of information.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Members of the Resources and Development Committee. In, in, in our efforts to pursue uh, the approval from the United States government to take over a program. Um, we do, as Ms. Barney mentioned, um, substantial amount of regulation development. And um, as a regular part of that process. We do a lot of community, uh, public outreach and community and public education. Um, as to what is coming and why we are developing a new regulatory program. There will be public comment periods um, established in these processes, uh, public notices. Um, at least a minimum thirty day public comment period, sometimes we can extend them for longer periods. And during that time, we do outreach, presentations uh, to help inform uh, not only the public. But also the regular, potential regulated community or people that will fall under these regulations. Um, what we're intending to do so that when the public comment period is open, they're informed about how to um. You know, what to comment on. So a lot of times we want people to understand and focus their comment uh, on the action that we're proposing to take. Uh, and so we do that with um, other water programs and a lot of our other environmental programs that. Um, do these types of uh, public actions and, and open up public comment periods. So um, the scheduling for those will probably happen. Uh, within another year or so, but I'll, I'll defer to you along the Barney about how, how that's going to work out in the timeline. Um, as far as the, the, the process of developing regulations, I know we've already started to, to put things together. Um, and as far as the uh, the other question regarding um, the. Tremendous, tremendous amount of work it takes to capture data and then to manage that in the, in the database. And then uh, being able to provide that information to um. Different interested segments of our population. Um, I know we do that with a lot of our other regulatory programs. Uh, example, the community confidence reports. While we don't oftentimes uh, provide that information ourselves. The regulated community or the regulated entities provide it. And this is a particular aspect of the drinking water program. That our main drinking water provider, NTUA, is required to share information about their periodic testing of the ground of the drinking water sources. So that is put into their, their bills on an annual basis. Customers are seeing the information that NTU, NTUA keeps in their database. And we keep on top of NTUA to make sure that data is there in their database. And so that's one way that we can uh, make sure that people are able. And so that's one way that we can make sure that people are able to understand and see. These huge amount of information that gets collected on a monthly basis or quarterly basis. In a manner that is easy to understand and, and that they can use. In discussing either with us or with the, the people that provide these, these services. So we do have experience and capacity in this area. And as we develop the data for a class six well program. We'll be looking to make sure that of course the chapters and the local officials are, are. In line to receive this information in a manner that it works for them. And of course, we're always open to doing one-on-one consultations and, and educational outreach meetings with our local officials. Last thing, I'd say turn it over to Ms. Barney regarding. I guess what is something that might, might, I don't know if it's a new thing, but tornadoes. And, and, and other types of natural disasters. You hear people who are concerned about climate change saying that our weather events are just becoming more extreme. And I don't know if the last evidence of this is, you know, these tornadoes. They're very infrequent here. I, I wouldn't, I'm not the right person to say that we've never had a tornado here before. But my general sense is that the way we construct. Here on the Navajo Nation is not incorporating some of these things that we're now seeing. In terms of extreme weather events or high winds. Even seismic activity. We know that there are faults all across the nation. They're old, they're dormant, but they're on record. And all of these things, we have some understanding of, but we haven't yet to put in all the policies. As reflected in places like California, that's really a lot of land use policy and other policies about. Building and construction and maintenance, taking into account the amount of seismic activity there. And of course, across the Midwest and in tornado alley, there's probably a lot of things that are taken into consideration for structures and how they're built. In order to withstand the, the occurrence of tornadoes. One of the things that we did right on with the, the heels of the tornadoes that occurred recently. Was that we did call the next day out to all the facilities to make sure that there, if there were any damages, that they did the necessary reporting. And we'll continue to follow up with, with, with those folks. But as far as the way that the facilities are constructed, I'm not certain that many of them have. The designs and the. The, the ability to withstand. Some of these severe weather events. But that is something that we'll have to, I think, address from our perspective as, as a regulator. And as far as what we might encounter in terms of response, if these extreme weather events are going to potentially be the reason why releases occur. Why things fail and contaminants and pollutants get into the environment. I'll let Ms. Barney.
So Director City, I believe three of us here have to be somewhere else. If we can just get that into the report, that Delegate Clough had requested an email to RDC. Because I have to be, and I still have a drive, so I have to get there. It's very important that I make my appointment. So if we can get that information, but what I'll do is we'll have Ms. Nakai here work with you. And Chair Nez, if you can just provide Matt's email address as contact information. And Steve Gray, so that we could have that collective leadership meeting. And again, I guess this would also be area going forward, you know, in forms of what is the emergency response on Navajo Nation EPA side with some recommendations. And I do appreciate that. So. Email out to RDC. So I just want to quickly put on your radar. We need to circle back around without petroleum. I know that there's been issues that's been coming up again. We need OPVP involved. I know that you represent him, but we need his office involved, just to let you know. I'm still working on getting that meeting together, but it's just a matter of time right now. So most likely probably go to October, but there are some serious issues that we've heard. From the second day session that we had there in Aneth and that's what Honorable Clough is referencing. Get the report accepted. I do have a motion and a second. I have a motion by. Okay, I have a motion here by Honorable Vice Chair Johnson and the second by Honorable Clough. So colleagues, with two tasks outstanding would be a report that Honorable Clough had requested. And also just a financial expenditure on what the current expenditure percentage is with that one point nine five year grant. That's been given to US EPA and then a leadership meeting that's requested by Chair Nez. So colleagues, I'm going to go ahead and take this report to roll call vote. Honorable Vice Chair Johnson, how do you vote?
Vice Chair, please, I'm going to vote green.
Thank you. Honorable Clough, how do you vote?
I vote green.
Thank you. Honorable Chair Nez? Thank you. And Honorable Chair Simpson is excused. Honorable Otto So is excused. So with that, we have three favorite zero posts and chair not voting. So again, a report has been accepted and the next stat, next task I just read out. So we'll be working with you to schedule that leadership meeting calling. So again, thank you for your report here today and giving us information on this five-year grant and the intent of this grant. We're going to item number eight, close of session. Motion, I have Vice Chair, may I get a second? Honorable Chair Nez, and I'd like to go ahead and take adjournment to roll call vote at two fifty PM. And Honorable Vice Chair Johnson, how do you vote?
Vice Chair, please, I'm going to vote green.
Thank you. Honorable Clough, how do you vote?
I vote green.
Thank you. Honorable Chair Nez, how do you vote? Honorable Chair Simpson is excused. Honorable Otto So is excused. We have three favorite zero posts and chair not voting. So with that, we adjourn at two fifty PM. Next meeting will be next Monday here at the indocks on the Tony Boardroom. So thank you again, colleagues, for all the dialogue today. You be safe out there and we will be talking to you soon. Have a great Monday.